Yeah.
It's called a March we need to order. Kathy, please take the real call.
Mrs. Briscoe, here. Mrs. Tunny, here. Mrs. Oze, here. Mr. Andreessen.
Good evening.
Mr. Bush.
Here.
Mrs. McMillan, here. Mrs. Lindsay.
Here. Okay, please stand for the pledge. That was like the Pledge of Allegiance in surround sound, I think. Okay. All right, we'll start with public communication. First up is Debbie Blank.
Good evening. I just wanted you guys to give you guys a brief update on the volleyball cure last night. It was amazing. Thank you for everybody that came out, bought a shirt, supported us, whatever you did. Thank you. Tentatively, we're at $3,777. So we haven't, that's just tentatively, but we're up there. I just want to thank all you guys for that. And I want to thank the community. It was an amazing event. Thank you. And I'm going to introduce, are we going to go into then, MTA?
Okay. Next up is Jen Francis.
Hello, hello. I am Jen Francis. My daughter is in the special 3K at MES. And I wanted to let everyone know that the 2024 Schools Out Color Run Walk is officially a sensory-friendly event. Special thanks to Board Member McMillan. We had chatted after the last board meeting about how do we become more inclusive with our sensory-friendly folks? So we have added that option. So it's super exciting. More to come. There's, I know flyers are going to be sent out to the schools on Friday. But the PTA is asking for everyone to kind of share with your friends and family. They don't have to be 1-5-9 families. Anyone is invited. It is a 5K. But there is also the Kids Dash for our younger friends. And then the sensory option is going to be a paintless option. The parents can opt in for the paint. The paint is powder, so they can kind of decorate their shirt without being splashed, per se. But more information to come. Check out the PTA website. And thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Next one was just an add-on. Okay. Now, sorry, Debbie, we just had to come up. It's good exercise.
MTA would like to have, we're going to have the social workers and second grade tell you what's happening with them. We're going to start with Michelle Ma. Hi. Hello. We are here tonight on behalf of MTA and of course, the second grade team to highlight what's been going on this year. We started out in our new reading series, reading about schools around the world as they found ways to continue learning in the wake of natural disasters and other challenges. Then we dug into remote paleontology discoveries. See what I did there? As we read about famous paleontologists and fossils. Back in November, we took a field trip with our newly acquired knowledge to the Field Museum. If you'd been there that day, you would have heard, hey, we read about that echoing all over from all of the displays. Most of that was from the kids. Sometimes it was us. It aligned really, really well. Now we are learning about the importance of pollinators and how to protect them. Our students have been researching, writing, and presenting on these topics, and the level they've been able to achieve is astounding. The series does such a really great job of putting in scaffolds for students who need support while leaving all the assignments open-ended. So the sky is the limit, and these kids have been soaring. They have been working on how to protect pollinators. They have been working on putting together, researching, writing, and presenting on these topics. And I don't want to get too much into that because that'd be a spoiler alert for what's coming up next month. In math, we spent a lot of time learning about various strategies of adding and subtracting two and three-digit numbers before getting into the basics of multiplication and division. We're going beyond just memorizing facts and actually using manipulatives to show the why and the how behind all of these equations. Now we are working on visual representations of data. We are working on money. Started to count up some money today. And we're getting into fractions, which is setting the basis for all those third-grade skills we're going to be coming up with. In science and social studies, we have learned about government, pioneers, inventors, our 50 states. And after spring break, we're going to be learning about various animal habitats before taking our second field trip to the zoo so we can see all the different ecosystems in action. Beyond the curriculum, we are working towards organizing two big parent involvement events. Dudes Rock in April and Ladies We Love in May. This is going to be a special activities for our students and a special adult in their life. Should we survive it this year? We're hoping that we're going to make it an annual event. And in March, thanks to Sarah Borley's hard work here, we have been competing in the Tournament of Books where every teacher nominated two books. The kids heard them and have been voting, and we've been working down the brackets. The final vote is happening tomorrow. I'm mildly competitive about it. Mrs. Kate and I are going head-to-head with our book selections. And finally, just, this one's kind of a personal note, but it'd be weird if you guys still like leave right now, so I got stuck. I've been around here for a long time. I've been past 10 years in kindergarten with diagnosis like this is blank. And I started feeling like I was ready for a change. Fortunately, I had administrative support. I was scared because the kindergarten teams are amazing. They came together to look at what we could do best for students all the time. And I got up to second grade and realized I didn't leave the time at all. They are just as amazing. And so that's my long-winded way of saying, we should be really pleased with the caliber of professionals that we have. And I know it's not just the teachers. Like, our administrators are all very student-focused. A lot of you guys have been sitting here for years, volunteering your time, making those same kind of decisions. And we thank you for that. And I thank you for your time. I'll stop talking now.
All right, I will go first. My name is Susiana Bertenski, and I'm the school social worker that works with preschool and kindergarten here at MES. I just wanted to give you guys kind of an update for preschool and preschool. We recently had a pajama gym invite party where we brought together MES Early Start and Early Childhood Families. It was awesome to see the kids outside of the school environment or the classroom environment. They loved coming in for pizza and being able to play with their friends outside of school hours. And like I said, it was very cool, me as a social worker, seeing kids interact with their peers outside of the classroom. It was nice to see. And they all had a lot of fun. They didn't want to leave when it was time to go home.
Hi, I'm Stacy Kittler, social worker at MES. I'm assigned for second, third grade. And I just wanted to talk about a program that we completed last month called Kids Connection. Many of you may be familiar with that. It's a program that supports students affected by death or divorce. And only had about a dozen students this year, but I've run this program every year since I've been there. And I know what kind of a need it meets. It's a before-school program. It revolves around home-based issues. So this isn't what we're doing during the school day, but it definitely, we get so much good feedback from parents about how they appreciate us meeting this need. It's a really tough time for students, and we're happy that we could do it. And I'll tell you, you know, on the last day, we had a lot of students very sad that the program was ending. Been blessed to run this program a long time. I have facilitators running the small groups that are so sensitive and compassionate and creative and do a great job with these students in need. So yeah, we just finished that up and looking forward to doing it again next year. Thank you for supporting that program.
And then, my name's Jenna Ends. I'm one of the school's social workers at Moquina Junior High. I do, well, me and my counterpart, Tori Toach, we do sixth, seventh, eighth altogether. Currently, with our Tier One SCL program at school, we're doing growth mindset, and we're actually pairing it with the staff book study on metacognition. So we're using the growth mindset with our students. And then when we have our once-a-month faculty meetings, whatever team presents that day uses a metacognition lesson as part of that SCL lesson that week. So it's super cool to see the staff, what they're studying, the students, what we're teaching them, kind of blend and mesh together. And what's really cool, what the best part, our last SCL lesson that we had on Monday, we asked all the students, what does Make Today Matter mean to you? The teachers had a discussion in the classroom, and they all got a wooden coaster. And they got to design it, make it bright, colorful, what Make Today Matter means to you, a positive quote, whatever it is. And when we get them all collected, and sometime soon, I'm not exactly sure when, in the lunchroom, there's a huge blank wall, and we're going to have Make Today Matter spelled out with each of the tiles. So we're really excited for that. And that's what's going on. Did you hear that?
Okay. Thank you for all the speakers. Next on, we have five presentations for tonight. So we're going to start with Dr. Shaw on the first couple.
Good evening. Thank you. We're going to start our presentation off tonight. We've got, we've got them in a specific order. So we start with our Fund 21 update, which will lead into our capital improvement plan. It's the second one, Lincoln. Thank you. So we have our O&M Fund 21 referendum analysis. This is driven by our board policy after the referendum had been passed. So board policy says that we have to have these six reports. The first is what are our current year's estimated proceeds. The second is what did we spend our money on last year? The third is what are we spending our money on this year? What are the status of those projects that we've spent money on this year? And what are we going to spend our money on next year? Followed by our capital improvement plan, which will follow at the end of this presentation. Here is the board policy for your reference, the identified expenses inside that board policy, and part of those we like to refer to as warm, safe, and dry. The current year's estimated proceeds. You can see that in 2024, we have just over $2 million in this fund. Our three-year revenue projections, so we know what this year is. And then our estimates for next year, we're estimating, we know that when we do levy 2024, it's going to be a 3.4%. And then the next two years, we revert back to the 10-year mean CPI of 2.8%. The second part of the required reporting is the expenditures of the proceeds during the previous fiscal year. So this is from FY '23. We're currently in school year '24. So this was spent during '22-'23 school year. And this is accounted for in the next several slides down to the penny. By buildings, the district level was $116,000. Most of that was in the administration of this with the architect and engineering fees. MES was the recipient of most of the money in '23 at 1.5 million, MIS at 22,000, and MJ at just under $1 million. And then there are slides that go into the detail of what every check that was written out of this fund, to whom, what it's for, what account number it was charged to, and the dollar amount. So the first set are the district-wide expenses. Then we go into the elementary school, what projects we did at the elementary school, where we did the S3 project for the HVAC system downstairs, the unit vent project here in the south area. We did the preschool-for-all renovations. We did some tuck pointing and some seal coating. We also did sidewalk and curb replacement. So we did a lot of projects at MES in '23. And the blue is at MIS. The big projects at MIS were the sidewalk and curb and sidewalk replacements. And we also did some tuck pointing and sealant work at MIS. At MJ, the biggest item in '23 was the parking lot replacement at MJ. And then number three of this is the estimated expenditures for the current year. So our budgeted expenditures for FY '24 are 3.2 million. We did have some fund balance left over in '22 and '23. So we do know that we're getting 2 million in, and we're budgeting out 3.2. One of the mandates is to keep that balance at zero. The money was passed in a referendum by the community to support the buildings. And so one of those directives to me is to keep that at a zero fund balance and spend the money taking care of those warm, safe, dry for the buildings. This is how we're going to spend the money, the functions that we use. You can see the biggest part of it is building, construction, and equipment. The blue is the architect and engineering. Green is for maintenance and service. Red is for asphalt and concrete. And then the purple at the top is for safety and security. Number four is the status of the projects that are underway with the FY '24 proceeds. You can see them listed. I just talked a little bit about them, that were completed in '23, and some of them that crossed over into '24 with PFA classrooms, the unit vent replacements. We had some flooring projects, door replacements, tuck pointing, painting. And then there was a repair on the parking lot in '24. Still working on the chiller replacement scheduled for completion this fall, the playground, parking lot, and access road completion this fall. We're doing a window laminate project, some flooring projects, and cybersecurity is ongoing. Our projections, so this is our projections for the next five years. This year, we do have a higher budget than we have in the years previous. We take away those over expenditures and revert back to the norm in 2025 with our increases corresponding to our revenue increases in the three years out. And then you can see the blue is the fund balance. So we did have a high fund balance in '22 and '23. In '24, we do have a budget that shows our fund balance decreasing to get back to the zero mark. And then as we go out forward, we have a slightly increasing fund balance as our revenue is increasing by about 3%, and our expense is at about 2%. This is my favorite chart of all of them. And then number five is what's coming up next year. So we're going to be finishing paying and finishing the MES playscape project. We're going to take a look at doing fire alarm panels at MES and MIS. Got some electrical work. We are asking the board for approval for the seal coating of the parking lots and the patching tonight. Part of the chiller will get finished. And then we've got a MJ storage unit on a concrete pad. And then some bathroom partition work. Those bathroom partitions are old. We're going to replace those and clean that area up. And then we do have specific money set aside for district projects, which end up looking like doors, windows, flooring. So that is for what it looks like for FY '25. And then the last piece of the mandated report is the capital improvement plan. We have our team that we meet every two weeks with our architects and engineers. Dan Fried is our main architect partner. He's here tonight. And Christian from ESG, there's Christian back there. I saw you come in. Christian from ESG is with us tonight. So if you want to come up here and give this presentation, you're both welcome to come up. Christian, you see here, often in our board meetings. You're welcome.
Before we go down that path, make sure it's a good expenditure and replacement's not a better path. Is there anything here you want us to focus on? I want, I know you went through the report last week, so I don't want to bring it into the weeds, so to speak.
Maybe just like the first seven or eight slides, because not every floor number was that.
Oh, sure. Sure. Okay. So as we talked about, the laundry list, looking back, we did use the lens of about a three-year window, looking back at what's been completed, just to remember where we're at. And then if you go to the next slide, then looking ahead. So upcoming for the next, this forthcoming, or upcoming year, we've got, and I'm not going to be able to read that very well, but I'm going to cheat and use this. Can Christian jump in if you have? And I know we have a lot of other things in the works that are kind of getting shifted around, but if you said priorities. Yeah. Probably the most transformative project that'll be seen by all is the playground. The playground, the parking, that will be underway as soon as school's out. And you'll see a lot of activity between the MES and MIS. So we're looking forward to that because it's kind of building on what you've already done behind the building here and taking it to that last leg. So the MIS kids have a nice hard surface play area that they can
I did just want to point out that I had a couple conversations about the seal coating of the parking lot.
Yeah. Yeah. So the seal coating was actually targeted out a year or so. Since we have a site contractor on board for this playground work, we thought it'd be beneficial to at least ask for a price for that. We can add that to their contract if we feel the pricing comes in fair and on track with our estimates. So we are getting pricing through a proposal request, which is a vehicle we use to work with contractors that are already under contract with the district to ask them for pricing. If those numbers don't come back in alignment with what we believe is fair, then we will look at other ways to accomplish that. But usually, as an economy scale, they're already mobilized at site. They're the same type of contractor that would do that seal coating. So we're going to issue that proposal request here over the next couple of weeks, if the board's comfortable with that decision tonight. And then we'll bring back those numbers before we actually award that to them. The, I'm sorry, the upcoming? Oh, got it. So upcoming this year at MIS is, again, the hard service play area, as well as the Willow Crest Road improvements. The road that connects that area will also be completed and repaired, or replaced, actually. We're also working on a restroom flooring package along with the library flooring. So we've got a flooring package that if the board approves it tonight, will be going out here in the next couple of days. And you'll see bids on that at the April board meeting for approval. That encompasses several areas at MIS and some small areas at MES here outside the kitchen area for one and at the front vestibule. The last thing is the seal coating that we talked about at MIS, which would be part of that proposal request. And then forthcoming projects for MIS, two to three years out, we're anticipating the replacement of gym floor, rough areas at the 1972 building, 7274, emergency lighting in select areas. Christian Martin mentioned the fire alarm panel replacement, and then the flooring at the library. So we pulled that forward. Again, if we see an economy scale item that really makes sense to package with the same similar kind of trade work, we'll pull that forward, at least get a price for it. If we don't like the number, we can push that back into the year that it started, it was originally targeted for. And then we've got some miscellaneous door, sink, and finish upgrades, too. Those are the types of projects we talk about every few weeks. If it can be pushed out a little bit to let something else, and it becomes a higher priority, those are usually the little projects that move around in that matrix that you see at the back of the report. And then at MJ, really, it's the boiler, or the, I'm sorry, the chiller project, which has been, because of weed times, that kind of equipment has kind of come into a close this summer. If you have questions, this is the guy to ask on that. We have the equipment. It's in storage. I went and saw it myself. I picked it up. We're good. Ready to go. That's good news. So before your next cooling season, that should be in place. And then upcoming, or forthcoming at MJ, we also had some flooring items potentially there. Some, a little more work on the site. There are some ponding areas outside of the paved area that potentially will be addressed. And then, as Dr. Shaw mentioned, the storage unit there, too, might be a late this summer project, depending on availability. That is pretty much the recap. And I will say, moving into the matrix, I know this gets a lot of detail here. We're looking ahead, those next couple of years. The items that are grayed out in that are items that have been completed, just as a reminder that we're taking this off the list. If it's back further than a couple of years, they can fall off the list. So we're, anything in green now is kind of falling on that three-to-five-year timeframe. We also are We also are, just a reminder, that all these costs are project costs, meaning that it's construction cost, but it also has fees, testing contingency, so it's your all-in budget, just so it's easier to forecast those numbers as you look into the project. And then we escalate it to based on what we believe to be the inflation factor as on an annual basis. And that obviously has done a little bit of ups and downs the last couple of years, but we're still anticipating it's running around four to five percent. So if any changes on that, we'll certainly make that adjustment. So questions for myself or Christian?
I have a question. First, thank you so much for the detail and for all your work. You really come and give a lot of detail and show up with our staff and everything, so I appreciate that. As an economist, I love the use of economies of scale, so I appreciate that. Could you give me a little more background of hearing that we're going to possibly be completing some of the projects ahead of schedule? How do we refresh our priority list to use that referendum money that we are lucky to have to make sure that we're completing what each of the schools say are priorities to them? If Dr. Shaw or you have some insight, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I think our meetings that we, every two weeks, administrative team forwards, things that surfaced from each of the schools, something that wasn't on our radar initially. Facility assessment that started this process is still a snapshot of time. So we know that things can change or more for a safety issue could arise. So we do talk about those and bring those on the list. Some of the things on this list weren't on the original matrix. We do add things on here. There's also a category at the bottom of the matrix that is really at the discretion of the district that tackle, whether it's landscaping, flooring, some of those miscellaneous items, the bottom of each school. So that's a fund that has some flexibility for those things that may arise that we didn't have out looking out in two to three years. And then as far as how do we change our priorities, it's really just collaborative. Can we buy it more time? Can we do something to extend the life of something? Because we have to move things out every year. You know, looking out at 2027, which you don't see on this chart, we know that that is cresting over your available funds. So we're going to, as we get closer to that year, we'll start to rearrange and understand what can push out another year. Because a lot of these are driven by lifecycle costs. And we know based on maintenance, quality of the installation, quality of product, lifecycle cost is just one metric. It might be, something might be in worse condition than its lifecycle or it might be able to buy some more time on that lifecycle. So this is, that's really the discussions we have at our biweekly meetings is can we get by a little further? What has come up? You know, roof leaks are things that you can't wait on. So that might pop on the list that was unexpected. And then something else might have to push out a year to accommodate. That's really our process. It's pretty, it's pretty real time as far as going through that.
Thank you so much.
Just answer your question.
Yes, thank you so much.
Sure.
So I'm not sure if my question is for you or Dr. Shaw. You, I'm trying to correlate the budget with the Fund 21. And I know it's not clean, right? But what I'm wondering is, is there a line item on our O&M fund that I can add to the Fund 21 and get to what the totals on the capital improvement plan are for the year? Is that, can that be clean?
It's not going to be a one-to-one. It is a little fluid. The pricing of a project might be, it might all be in the $50,000 range where in our budget line, it might be $10,000 range. So they're not going to add up exactly. You're not going to see 2 million, 51,000, and then 2 million, 51,000. You might see 2 million. So it's not going to be $10,000, $10,000 capital plan. It's going to be close. We're very touchy and saying this bottom line down here seems to be close to the, I guess, when I put down the $2 million mark. So you can see that they're close. And so we have those meetings where we do add things, take things out to get to the part where we're right around 2, 2.29.
So that's kind of what I thought. And then I was thinking, is there other things that are hitting the capital improvement plan that are not coming out of the O&M Fund 21?
Are the things with capital plan that aren't coming out of the plan? Not really.
Okay.
The items that we pick out in the capital plan are very specific Fund 21 projects.
Fund 20, okay.
Because when you look at your board policy, which we're in a couple of slides in, it's very specific what floor is through policy has said is what you can use on 214. And it has HVAC, it has airlocks, it has little envelopes, it has hearing. So I didn't go through them really clearly. One, a lot of the time I don't have a here. I was trying to, if I have policy, what you can specifically use in 214. We can use, if it's tighter, like if there's something that might be in that one big drive, we can purchase it with 21. We purchase it with 21. But it does work.
Right, this is more straight.
It is.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Jeff.
All right. And then the next presentation, we have our PMA Financial Advisor, Bob Lewis, with us tonight. And we are going to talk about the bond and interest fund, which is Fund 30.
Pardon me. Well, thank you for having me here tonight. So if you were at the finance meeting last week, this presentation was similar, although I did update that last slide with the specific dates as requested. So we won't have to do the gymnastics that we were doing at the finance meeting, trying to line those up. So your debt service fund is one of the fund, I always forget its number.
30.
Fund 30.
Yep, 30.
And Fund 30 dollars that are derived from certain sources, like the property tax levy, are restricted just to pay the debt service on bonds. And over time, you can get some funds that accumulate in the debt service fund that come from those tax collections and also from investment earnings. And they can sometimes go back years, you know, because they slowly accumulate. Some of it's probably left over from when you had your prior referendum bonds that was replaced by this limited rate increase that you were just talking about. So since I just mentioned that that can only be used to pay the debt service on geo-bonds, there is a way to utilize these funds to perhaps put them for other use that you may budget or plan for. But before we talk about that, just the last bullet point in this slide is the amount that we estimate you've accumulated is about 250,000. You have a little bit more than that, but you never want to take it right down to eliminate the entire accumulation because, you know, you might need a few dollars from when you're a nexus for some reasons, like different tax collections, for example. So how can you utilize these funds for capital-like projects? You know, in this specific case, we're going to be talking about your transportation fund. So the way that we go about utilizing these funds for that type of project and meet the restriction that's on this fund, is we have the district issue a one-month working cash bond. A working cash bond is a type of bond that you're authorized to do pursuant to the school code. And so what would happen is you would go through the process that is required in order to have the authority issue working cash bond. And that process involves a hearing and a three-day petition period. And after those have been completed, then the board passes a resolution authorizing the sale up to that amount. And the amount we envision would be 250,000 if the board decides to proceed. After the sale of the bonds and the closing of the bond issued, the $250,000 will be deposited into the working cash fund. And then one month later, the bond issue paid off by the $250,000 or so that's in the debt service fund. So consequently, you end up getting the money from the debt service fund into the working cash fund, which then would be subsequently abated to the transportation fund because what's envisioned is that in fiscal year '25, you'd be using that money to purchase a bus, two buses, yes. And so the timeline that would get you to the point from starting the process to all the way for the bonds maturing is set forth right here. So it would begin next month at the earliest with the board adopting notice and intent resolution to issue the bonds. And that document gets published in a local paper. From the date that it's published, the 30-day clock starts. It's not from the day you pass, it's from the day you approve. Also, that night, we envision that the president would sign an order calling for the bond hearing. On this chart, it says binding hearing. Binding stands for Bond Issue Notification Act. So those both get published roughly two days later, just depending on the publication notification requirements from the paper that we'd utilize. I think the other night, which paper did we say it would be?
Southwest.
Southwest. And that's the paper that you normally use for publication.
Southwest Herald, sorry.
Southwest Herald, sorry. Not the airline paper. You don't put it on the outside of the point. So the binding hearing would be on May 15th. That hearing is typically very short, usually three to five minutes. And it's very similar to your budget hearings or your tax under. On June 12th is the earliest date then that the board could approve a parameters resolution authorizing the sale. Parameters resolution means that there's certain things set forth by the board, like the maximum payment amount, the maximum interest rate, the maximum term. And subject to those parameters being met, then the delegates to that resolution can approve it, which are typically Dr. Shaw's position. I can't remember your exact title, I apologize. And the board president. And so then we anticipate that sale will be a few days later, on June 17th. And usually, these 30-day bonds are bought by, sometimes a local bank, oftentimes another type of year in government might just buy them as an investment. And then in July, the bonds will close. That's when you receive the proceeds. July is chosen strategically just because that's in your next budget here, so you don't need a new budget for this process at all. And then about a month later is when the bond would mature. I suppose one step is missing from here. After the closing on July 9th at your July or later board meeting, you would approve the resolution to move those funds from the working cash fund to the transportation fund. So that's the presentation of the process to be able to use these dollars in the debt service fund to purchase these two new buses. Any questions on that? Yes?
I apologize. I wasn't at the finance committee meeting.
No problem.
Appreciate your time. I'm concerned, I guess I'm not concerned is not the right word, but you know, the perception that the public has in seeing this, you know, notice and what we're doing basically looks like we need money, I think. Is that right?
I want to ask you, because it's very common that working cash bonds are used by school districts across the state regularly for capital projects. So even though the name says working cash bond, I had not encountered a situation where the public's become concerned that you're in need of cash because of that. It's working cash bonds, other than referendum proof bonds, working cash bonds are most commonly used in non-referendum proof capital projects.
So it's kind of a known thing if we're issuing a working cash bond that, yeah, we just want to, we just want to get the money out to do something.
Well, in this particular case, it's utilizing it to essentially get the funds from debt service to working cash for something else. But oftentimes, working cash bonds are issued over a longer term on a non-referendum basis. And they're constrained by how much you can do by the property tax cap law. But a lot of times, those are done over 10, 15, 20 years. In fact, you have other working cash bonds outstanding right now. I can't remember the series designation.
Point 16A and point 16B.
Point 16A and B. So those were, or one of those two were originally working cash bonds that you issued for a long-term basis for capital projects. I'd say that's the more common type we do. Normally, these working cash bonds are outstanding for 30 days. Me personally, I probably have clients who, on average, two to four of these each year.
So the notice is that it's a 30-day?
No, the notice just says the district, generically speaking, it will say that the board of this district is intending to issue working cash bonds in an amount not to exceed $250,000. That's all it will say. It's got a value, followed form, that's in the statute. There's no specific purpose put in it. Purpose can be explained at the hearing.
Yeah, we have to verbally explain that to the public, that this is the purpose, and it will be a quick...
Exactly.
Flush in and flush out, and this is just a mechanism.
Right.
Okay, okay. I was just...
Yeah, good question.
Thank you.
I have another client I'm working on right now. I mean, it just varies by account. Client I work with, I want right now, has got three and a half million dollars in this fund. I'm very good at realizing. Typically, that happens in counties like Cook County because they add a much larger percentage to their levy each year. So you end up with larger accumulations. But it, you know, throughout the summer, it's a year that the bonds are this type every year.
Well, I know you mentioned this at the finance committee, just so the public understands kind of what is happening here. I mean, we essentially have $250,000 that got levied to pay debt service funds, debt service bonds, that are now sitting in, that can't be used other than to pay debt service. And we don't have debt service to pay. So this is a mechanism that, as Bob alluded to, is what school districts do to unlock those funds and use them for operational purposes. That's what we're trying to do here, is we're trying to unlock those funds so that we can then use those to buy two school buses. And we can't do that unless we do this working cash. That's the mechanism that the state allows us to do. As Bob alluded to, several school districts do this. So this is not uncommon. You touched on this a little bit, but maybe you can help people understand how that balance gets to 250, $250,000. So essentially, how I understood it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that our taxpayers in Mokena are so good that we're at like a 99.5%. So what happens is when they do levies, they anticipate that not everyone's going to pay their taxes. So they might anticipate 98%. So then you levy for the fact that you might lose 2%. And that's how, when those funds come in, you kind of build that up because we're paying essentially, our community is so great at paying the property taxes, thank you, that's how it essentially builds up, correct?
Yeah, well, that, and there's investment earnings, although until recently, investment earnings were much smaller at the moment. They're just because short-term interest rates are so low. But yeah, because over the last couple of years, it's been something. Because what happens is you have an overall bond levy above that, and then we collect those dollars to start earning interest on that, those funds, before you make the bond. So there's a couple of different sources to that. But generally, you're exactly correct in what you just stated.
I've got one. The cost to our taxpayers to do this is?
Yeah, there's no additional levy because you already have the dollars. In some sense, you benefit because if you were to finance these buses to the leasing company, you'd be paying over a longer period of time, in 30 days. Any other questions? I'll go ahead and morph the chat and cover them. Make sure you get the documentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Shaw, you're not done quite yet? I think you've got another one here?
One more. So in March every year, we also do our five-year financial projections. And I'm going to go through our aggregate five-year financial projection. And we're going to look at the operating funds. So we're going to look at specifically the funds on the left, education, operations and maintenance 20, which also includes 21, transportation, our IMRF Social Security Fund, our working cash fund in Torque. What is not going to be in these projections are debt service, capital projects, and life safety. So here is the picture of what it looks like. It starts on the left with the AFR from FY '19. So AFR stands for Annual Financial Report, which is our audit. So when we see that it's an AFR, that means this is what actually happened. And we have the five-year... And we have the five years of our history with the AFRs, where the red line is above the top blue line, and then we get into the budget for FY24, which is the year we're currently in. And a budget, just to remind everybody, is what we anticipate is going to happen. When we look back at our AFR, those are what actually happened. And then when we go to the right, we see the projected, and so those projections are based on a set of assumptions that I'm going to share with you tonight. So the goal, according to board policy, is to have fund balance between 33% and 65%. The bottom line says 35, it should say 33, that's me, on me. And so the goal is to stay between 33% and 65% fund balance. And you can see with our budget in FY24, with that additional spend down of the capital projects, it puts our fund balance right between the 35% and 65% fund balance, 60%, 35% and 60% fund balance. So that is a really pretty picture going forward of financial stability. The aggregate history, this is the history that feeds into the AFR data that was shown on the graph, and you can see where we are, the estimated fund balance for June 30th of 2024, right at the 51% mark. And then on the right of the budget are the aggregate projections, and you can see in our projections that our fund balance going forward fits right between 51% and 55% going forward for five years. And this is a snapshot of this year, the current budget. Next month, you'll actually see the amended budget, but this is a look at our current budget, and this is the budget with the deficit in it to bring that fund balance back down, with the biggest part of this deficit being in the O&M fund. And second, in the transportation fund, with the purchase of four buses this year. So some of those assumptions with the local tax revenue, our estimated EAV from last year, we just got those numbers back last year, so this is actually updated, know a little more information this week than I did last week. And what our CPI is going to be for this year at 24, we know that's going to be at 3.4, and then going to 2.5, which is the average when we take a look back. We're estimating new property at 3 million, and percent change to our existing EAV at 2.5% a year, and our tax collection rate has been pretty rock-solid at 99.5. Some non-levy estimates, our impact fees to remain flat, and then interest income, which has been really high the last couple of years because of that increase in interest, we do anticipate that to be flat and then decreasing, as those interest rates are projected to decrease. Registration fees flat, food service remain constant. We do anticipate that our evidence-based funding, our state funding, increased by 30,000 a year, because it has increased by 30,000 a year the last couple of years. And then federal title funding decreasing, and also removing all ESSER money. O&M fund, non-levy again, to stay, to stay flat, 250,000 of EBF into the O&M. We did have 500,000, changing that to 250,000 to support the other funds. Our building rentals increase. Then transportation, the fees to be flat, we do anticipate a 5% increase in our state transportation reimbursement, because we're spending more on transportation, we expect to receive more back in transportation. And then adding some levy in 2024 into the transportation fund to help bolster it from its low at 16%. And then the transfer of the 250, which is kind of a wash, because it'll go in and then we'll purchase those buses. IMRF social security, we levy for what we need. And this is a look at the aggregate projections on the revenue side, so you can see where our revenue is increasing between 2.5% and 3% as we go out. 86% of our income is locally funded from the taxpayers, 9% from the state, and 5% federally And then our salary and benefits, which are our largest expense, we've got assumptions are in blue, and the certified classified staff, we have one more year left of our classified staff agreement, and then there's assumptions, our lien changes, our retirement adjustments, our actual retirement adjustments, so we know what's happening for the next three years, because we have a three-year retirement incentive. And then we don't know anything about year four and five, and that's what's on here, because that's what we actually know. We do have a plus-one staff FTE in FY25. We know what our average staff member costs is, straight off the Illinois report card. And then our health insurance increase at 88555. We may be a little low on that health insurance increase, is where our health insurance committee has met twice out of five meetings, and we have talked a little bit about what our claims history looks like, so that 8% might be a little low, based on what we're hearing in that insurance committee. And then this is the average health life benefit per FTE through the district. Our total salary budget's 12.5 million, and our total health insurance budget is just over 2 million. And then on our ed fund, some of our expenses, most of this is the removal of the ESSER III expenses, so we're bringing the education fund balances down through the ESSER fund And then our expense assumptions in our O&M fund, we do have the big expense this year in Fund 21, and then we do have our adjustments in 25 going forward, we've already kind of talked about those. And then in our transportation fund, we do have the four buses from this year, so that brought our fund balance way low, two buses for next year, we have assumptions for our salaries for our drivers. And then in purchase services, we know that we'll be paying less in bus leases, so our purchase service line item will go down for the next five years. And supplies and materials, we do anticipate a 3% increase. Working cash, we levy every year. We did have a big interest income increase in the working cash fund this year, as Bob Lewis talked a little bit about how we had interest income in different funds. Working cash fund has almost $3 million in it, so we do receive a lot of interest income in that fund. And then TORT, we pretty much discontinued using that fund in 2020, but it still exists in our projections. Our aggregate expense projections are coming between 3% and 4% and up to, yeah, 3% and 4% in the next five years, based on those sets of assumptions. And our biggest expense are salaries, benefits, purchase services, which are also our people. And one more look at what it looks like from this year going out in the next five years, the red line being between the fund balance policy of 33%, 35%, and 60%. Questions? That was a lot. I know, that was a lot. That's a lot.
Questions for Dr. Shaw?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the staffing plan for Dr. Cohen.
Dr. Shaw, are you able to drive with the clicker? So, well, just this section is separating the core and non-core staffing. So we have, for core staffing, we use a series of ranges to look at what's, to try and stay within an acceptable limit of class size, where we don't have too much staff at a particular grade level, which would be wasteful, or have too many students per classroom, which would also create some friction. We'll go to the next slide. These targets have been the district's targets now for quite a while. We have an area that we consider to be slightly low, a target range, areas where we continue to watch, and then areas that are high. In general, though, we've had very stable enrollment now for the last six to seven years. Go back to 2016, I guess that takes years now, the enrollment's pretty much stayed solid at 15, 15. Prior to that, the district had been over 2,000 students, and it slowly come down. But since 2016, 2017, that enrollment of about 160, 170 students at a grade level has been fairly consistent. Just a few years back, the last eighth-grade bubble of over 200 students graduated from Mokina Junior High, and we've stayed pretty, pretty much on the mark. We do have some changes from year to year. The enrollments that are estimated for next year are the exact enrollments as they exist today. Every summer, we have students that move out of the district, we have students that move in the district. We usually end up adding about one, maybe two students per grade level, but on the whole, we end up staying pretty even from year to year. We currently, if you go back, we currently have seven sections at each grade level. The recommendation is to stay at seven sections at each grade level. Third grade and fourth grade do have numbers that are creeping up in the lower area of concern, right around 24, 25 students per class on average. Those, that 178 number is, you know, is going to be there, and it's going to be in that concern range from here on out. The third grade number, though, that 24 number is not as big of a concern, unless the students get to be a little bit older. As the research shows, that smaller class sizes are generally preferred in primary grades, but class sizes can be slightly increased when they get a little bit older. Next slide. We're not recommending any change in core staffing for this year. There's, the district has had seven sections at a grade level for quite some time, and we're just planning to maintain that as our enrollment stays stable. Next. For non-core, this includes everything from our exploratory classes on up to the administrative team. We are recommending two increases and one very, very slight decrease. MES, we are recommending an additional social worker to help address the needs of our students, especially our youngest learners. We are recommending the addition of, and we have posted for the position of a coordinator of student services to also assist that department. Occupational therapy, we've had some shifts in some of our contracted staff that work in that department. We've had run resignation, if one person wants to go part-time, so we're replacing those individuals, and that will, basically, we're going from 2.2 FTE just down to 2.0 FTE. It's essentially one day a week of one of our part-time contracted therapists. You can see about 30, I'm sorry, about 50% or almost 35% of the non-core staff are in some way related to student services. Next slide. This basically sums up where we're at with non-core staffing. Again, up one social worker, there is a speech aid right now that is contracted at Mokina Elementary School. It's our plan right now to not use that contract for next year. Mokina Intermediate School, we have two, a need for two less classroom aides at MIS. And then Mokina Junior High, we have one contracted aide, physician that is not going to be with us, that student is graduating and going to the high school, so that one-on-one aide is no longer necessary for that student. Our aides are often one-on-one with individual students, and some of those students leave or their needs change, their, those needs, the aides change. We have a total non-core FTE change of 1.8, and what you can't see is that 1.8 plus zero leads to just a plus 1.8. Next slide. Early childhood enrollment this year is up to 83. This number changes as the school year goes on, as students are identified and screened and added to the program. We're recommending to keep those three classrooms operating the way they are for next year. In total, we are going to be reducing some classified FTE. The, we did use a 1.0 FTE increase for the class of estimating certified staff. Dr. Shaw begins her financial projections process in January, and so we usually do get out in January about how many FTE she's going to put in her projections, and she likes to hold me to that number. We are increasing a little bit more than that in terms of certified staff, but with the reduction, the slight reduction in classified staff, her financial projections will still hold true as it stands. But I do caution, staffing for related services is subject to change based on student need and enrollment. We could add a teacher over the summer, we could add any number of different positions over the summer, if we end up seeing students move into the district that have needs, students that are identified with having a need for student services or special services move in. We also have to add back classified staff. If we have a student that all of a sudden gets, has a need for a one-on-one aide, we will add that classified staff member in if that student needs it. So that is not subject to projection so much as it is just responsive to the needs of recipients. Any questions about overall staffing for next year?
Any questions?
I have some questions. Not sure what order to go in, so let's look at the average. There's no, sorry, there's no page number. Core staffing recommendation, there you go. Says, obviously, that's an average. How high does it go in a classroom?
Depends on the grade level.
On the concern areas?
Depends on the grade level. In grades K through 5, those numbers are pretty true, because we have seven sections of each section, they're pretty homogenous across the board, and so you don't end up with class average, your numbers are too far either above or below the average, because when students get added, they get added into the classroom with the least number of students, so they tend to stay pretty flat. In grades 6, 7, and 8, though, there are scheduling considerations when it comes to the different sections, the science, social science, history, I'm sorry, science, social science, ELA, and math. So some of our math sections, they're for enrichment. What we do is, we try and take the number of students enrolled and figure out a reasonable number of sections to offer. This year, it was two, for most of our grade levels. We have co-talk classes for both ELL and for special ed, that can impact those numbers as well, especially depending on schedule constraints. So we do have, how many did I say? I think there are 30 sections with 25 or more students at junior high this year. Some of those are in, I think four of them are PE, most of them are science and social science based on schedule.
How about the two areas that show a concern? Third and fourth grade? There's seven sections, and the average in fourth grade is just over 25. How high are we seeing in fourth grade?
I don't have that information right now.
Okay, okay, if I can get the, you know, by class, you know, how many classes and what that is, that's, because we should keep an eye on that. For pre-K and early childhood, do you have any trend numbers for how many kids are in the pre-K and early childhood, and how that could impact the numbers for kindergarten, so we can keep an eye on the average class size coming in? I don't know if that's something that can...
It's been my experience that pre-K really has nothing to do with kindergarten, they're not going to correlate.
Okay.
The number of 165, 1666 has been remarkably consistent for the last three to four years.
Okay. Great. And I think you touched on this, but I wasn't tracking, on the para-professionals, I was pleasantly surprised, I guess, that we wouldn't need to fill the two open positions. It's kind of atypical, I guess. Could you, could you reiterate where we wouldn't need to replace those, what level those are, again?
One at Mokina Elementary, two at Mokina Elementary, and one at Mokina Junior High.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Dr. Cohen, thank you for doing this. This is always, I think, a very important exercise. So I saw that there was, at one point in the past, I think it was maybe 2019-ish, that, I'm not sure which one of your predecessors did a staffing study. And I am interested to look at that staffing study. I think what, what you mentioned earlier is that that adequacy target came out of that staffing study, is that right?
That is not.
Oh, okay. Where did that, where did this?
The adequacy target, those numbers of 20 and 25 to 1, those are produced by the Illinois State Board of Education. Those numbers are part, are the basis for evidence-based funding. So ISBE produces a lot of ratios. It says that for every, you know, you should have so many speech-language pathologists for X number of students, you should have so many psychists and social workers, et cetera, depending on the number of students. And so that's the basis for what they consider to be fair funding. That's not always necessarily the case. You know, you may not, you may have a need for more or less staff, depending on whether or not your student body meets what the state board considers to be the typical, you know, distribution of needs. So that is, that is simply a recommendation or a target based on how we're funded. And that's been something... And that's been something that we included in the slides on the line.
Okay, so on this slide, what is the takeaway when we look at third grade and the average class size of twenty-four and the adequacy target of twenty to one? Knowing that it's an area, like Julie said, of concern, fourth grade also, but more so third grade, it looks like it's a bigger, you know, discrepancy difference between the two numbers.
Well, I could say this, staffing is directly tied to our budget. So we've added staff every single year that I've been here. Most of that, all of that, has been in related services. Core staffing at the junior high has gone down. We used to have approximately two hundred students per grade level. At that time, eight sections of classes were offered at each grade level, and so that class size of twenty-four to one, almost twenty-five to one, has been consistent throughout the history of the district, at least recent history. There was a time when the district was overcrowded and those classes were quite a bit higher, twenty-eight, twenty-nine to one. I'll be honest, if we could afford to offer eight sections at a grade level, I'd make that recommendation. But, you know, given the average FTE cost of a certified staff member being seventy-thousand dollars annually, if we were to meet the adequacy target by adding four teachers, one at grades K through three, that would be three hundred thousand dollars annually, and we would need to find somewhere to reprove that expense. Otherwise, we'd have to raise more funds through increasing student fees, we'd have to cut expenditures by reducing staff in other areas or cutting other programs. And so this, we feel, is the best recommendation to make to keep class sizes reasonable while still maintaining a robust, you know, suite of student services for our kids that have special, you know, that have learning needs, while also offering, you know, the wide variety of extracurriculars and other programs we have for our students as well.
Is there, for this core staffing recommendation, is there something that you look at that distinguishes between classes that are teaching ELA and math versus science or are the, I guess that's my question. Do you look at, you know, ELA and math as like trying to keep those classrooms, you know, as low as possible over other subjects, or are all subjects held to the same?
The question you have probably only applies in grades six through eight where those teachers are that subject-specific, and that's been a debate, a talk, a topic of conversation between Dr. Rollis and I and the junior high staff for quite some time. I've seen some nods in the back of the room. The junior high schedule is what drives some of those differences. We happen to have a schedule where there are four core classes, about one-hour blocks every day. So in an ideal world, you would have eight sections of each class because then each teacher could subject, focus on one subject area, and then, you know, if two teachers would then have eight sections, then math works out beautifully. Now, it just so happens that that eight worked out great for a number of years when we had about two hundred students at a grade level at the junior high. That enrollment has gone down, and you can see, like, for example, sixth grade this year is at one-sixty-four. From a district perspective, it makes sense to staff at seven sections. If we offered seven sections of math, ELA, science, and social science that would balance class size, that does create other wrinkles and complications in the schedule. The middle school model has teachers teaching on grade-level teams, it's not by department. And so in going to teams, if you have seven sections, that always leaves a section sort of hanging out there or an odd number. So you would have a teacher that would, maybe one teacher teaches ELA, but then you have three sections of ELA hanging out there, so one teacher would teach ELA and then something else. Now, our teachers are certified to teach those other topics. We have teachers that can teach ELA and social science. We have teachers that can teach math and science. However, the discussion has been for a while, which route would we prefer to go? The decision to schedule has been left at a building level, so the teachers and the administrators, the building leadership teams have been, have made that schedule in a way. It has, there's no one good solution to that schedule. It's been, it's a series of trade-offs. If you have seven sections of everything, now your teachers are split among curricular teams, where now we have two teachers teaching ELA, two teachers teaching math, two teachers teaching science and social science, one teacher, he has a foot in the science realm and in the social science realm at each grade level, the others are purely dedicated to their content. The choices would be, you know, stay with the status quo, split up with seven sections and change the way our curriculum teams work, add an eighth teacher at each grade level, which the research would say would not be the grade levels you would add an eighth teacher at, at a cost of approximately two hundred ten thousand dollars annually. So those are the trade-offs that go with a middle school schedule where you have teams, you know, so there's pros and cons. In my previous district, we had a middle school schedule where there were three core blocks every day, science and social science alternated days, so everything would be wonderful to work out in ratios of three, six, nine, or twelve. And I can tell you at every middle school, we had seven or eight. For whatever reason, they chose the wrong model, schedule model, for the number of students that they had based on the number of students they wanted in each class. That is a debate that's gone on every year since I started and even was a discussion point with the team not that long ago.
So would that be, I guess, I would just say it would be interesting to do maybe, you know, I'm just guessing that that staffing study was a valuable piece of information that came out of that, and, you know, could we at some point talk about doing that again and kind of, you know, perfect case scenario, what does this look like, and based on the enrollment that we see, and maybe some of these things can be cured?
The staffing itself was not one published document that came out from the district. It really was a series of interviews that Dr. White, my predecessor, had with the superintendents of other districts with similar demographics to us that had academic performance at or better than where compared to where we were. So Bloomingdale was one of them, Western Springs was one of them, and I think Lincoln was the, yes, it was way up north. Not Danic Burn.
I was on that.
Yeah. Oh, I could find it. But it was a series of interviews, and quite honestly, the core staffing was not the focus of some of those, of some of that analysis. A lot of it had to do with discussions about their schedule, related services, interventions, et cetera. I'm happy to share that, that, you know, adjusting the staff hasn't quite frankly been our focus lately, other than addressing the needs of students that arises through, you know, basically my recommendations from Jen, when Jen tells me what she needs. Western Springs was one, right? John Bartelt is up in Bloomingdale?
Yeah.
Oh. Yeah.
Side.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Cohen? Okay. We will move on then. Two discussion items. First discussion item, Board of Education, public engagement, outreach opportunities, possibilities?
Eric, can I move to table this discussion until next month in the, in the interest of our time tonight?
Okay. There is, do we have a second?
Oh, a second.
Wow. Okay. Second on that. So Kathy, can, maybe? I guess while we're waiting, any discussion?
All right, here we go.
Kathy, please call the vote to table.
Mr. Andreessen.
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan.
Yes.
Mrs. Oost.
Yes.
Mrs. Tenny.
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. We'll table it through next month. Okay, next one is on the agenda structure, which I believe is a discussion on how to get things on the agenda, is that correct?
Okay, yeah, well, not specifically. If I might start. Okay, so when I got on the board last year, one of the things I struggled with was how and when does our Board of Education do our work? Board meetings seemed to move fast, and I didn't understand when the actual conversations were happening amongst the board members. Over the past few months, we've been able to have more and more discussions, and I appreciate that, and it's, I've learned a lot. Last month, Mr. Bush and Dr. Cohen made the decision to eliminate the time allocated for communication during our meeting from our parent groups, staff, and members of this body. It did not need to be done. There was no pressing issue or legal requirement to do that. Our agenda has been the same format for more than ten years, and board members were not afforded the opportunity to talk about it before it was done. Time we had reserved to hear from our parent groups, staff unions, and board members themselves was removed from our agenda. This is our meeting, and we have the power to decide how to run our meeting. I personally would like to hear from our parent groups, our staff unions. I think it's important. I'd like to hear from my fellow board members and have the opportunity. I don't like limiting, excuse me, limiting those groups or us to three minutes. You know, I would like to just keep giving the groups the freedom to speak and present how they used to, and quite honestly, I just feel like this was the only time all seven of us are in the room to talk to each other, and, you know, now that's, now that opportunity is taken from us. I am one of seven equal members of the board hired by our community to sit at this table and have conversations transparently, and that's what I hope to do. By removing opportunities for communication from our agenda without any say, I feel like my voice is being silenced, as well as the voices of our parents and staff. Limiting and restricting my ability to talk at our meetings and ignoring emails when I try to get at least the topic put on our agenda for discussion is not in alignment with the oath we took. Part of the oath we took says, "I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing for the board." On January thirty-first, we had a board workshop, and we agreed to a tentative agenda process. This is consistent, we have two board policies that speak to this. We have a board policy two, two-twenty, that says, "Items submitted by board members to the superintendent and board president shall be placed on the agenda for an upcoming For the February meeting, I requested six times for something to be added to our agenda over the course of ten days, not every day, not multiple times a day. It was over the course of ten days. I didn't receive any response. In addition, we have a policy and procedure for removing, when a board member would like to have a item removed as a consent agenda item. And basically, our policy and Robert's Rule says that any one board member can just request something be removed from the consent agenda and added to a discussion item. In February, I asked five times for something to be removed from the agenda as a consent agenda item and put on for discussion. That was not done. So I'm hoping today we can come up with a plan to basically what you said, Eric, move forward and decide how we have board members add something to the agenda, and if it's not in alignment with the policy that we have right now, are we going to modify our policy, or what are we going to do?
Okay. Well, I'll start with first by saying that it's not true that Dr. Cohen and I unilaterally made the decision to change the agenda structure. We sent out emails to the board with the guidance from Natalie Williams on that, we discussed that last meeting, that our structure was out of the norm of any district she's ever seen before, and she recommended that we change that. We sent the guidance to the board on that. Unfortunately, we did not get to that discussion in our meeting with her. It was slated for three hours. We went three and a half hours with her, and we still didn't cover everything, including that topic. I sent an email to the board asking them, "Does the board want to follow her recommendation?" I did a poll. Five board members came back and said, "Yes, we are in agreement with following that structure that she proposed." So that's not me acting unilaterally. I went to the board and I asked them, and we can go across the table right now and ask which board member said yes. Please tell me, did you say yes?
I, I'm not going to answer that right now.
Okay, that's fine. You're not going to answer that.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I did.
I followed the recommendations of the professor we hired.
So there's four board members that have said they want to follow that. As president, I took an oath that I would follow the will of the board. Four people voted, and it's an email, we have it. That's not Dr. Cohen and I acting unilaterally. That was following the board's will. I have to do that, whether I like it or not. So that's first of all. Second, the three minutes thing. If you want to change that, that's in our board policy. We're going to have a board policy committee coming up. Happy to change that. If the board wants to change it, so be it. The board policy does state how people can get access to additional time. We can do that. We can make a change. As far as adding items, yes, let's talk about that. How do we get that? You know, in that meeting with Natalie Williams, you know, it was nine-thirty at night and we were rushing through things, and it wasn't clear specifically how to proceed. So I am willing to take whatever direction the board wants to do with that. I would say that prior to myself being president, board president, and superintendent, set the agenda, and it was set. They didn't ask for opinions, they just set it. That goes back to back when, even before Jim was president, and Jim was president, prior presidents before me. So that's not me acting unilaterally. I'm following past protocols.
If I may, for a second. If anybody ever came to me and said, "Hey, I'd really like us to focus on this," I would pull the group, and enough people wanted to talk about it, it was on the agenda. If it was one person, it didn't sound like it was the will of the board to talk about. We also have to remember, public comments is not open discussion. It's a time to listen to someone, but it's not a time for public discussion, and we have to remember that. And when we were setting our meeting, we were coming prepared to talk about certain things, and that's fine, but public comments started turning into public discussion, and it's not what it's designed to do, and that's not fair to other people to come in here and try to treat it as if it's an open dialogue, not point your aid, but that's not what it's for, and we all learn that's okay. But that's how I did it back then.
So as I said, I agree a hundred percent that we need to figure out some sort of structure. I think the one thing that Natalie suggested, and it's, you know, it's in the guidance of the superintendent expects, so it's kind of like, well, that's not really the board. But she said that, "Request for additions to the agenda, we'll go to the board president and superintendent, and they'll receive at least seven days before the meeting. This is the deadline. The board of the whole will agree to put an item on a future agenda before significant staff time is expended on the topic." So if that is the desire of the board, we can adopt that tonight, and let's move forward with that policy. If someone wants to propose another approach, then let's propose another approach.
I honestly thought that's what we agreed to the Friday night.
Yep, awesome. I agree.
Okay, if, then that, if that's the will of the board, then we can make it that. I would say then that we do need, if that's the will of the board, then we do need to set some parameters as far as how that would work. It doesn't, it just says- It doesn't, it just says, "The board of the whole will agree to put an item on the future agenda." So we need to determine, what does that mean? How would I determine, or how would superintendent determine what the will of the board is? If we're going to go with the polling approach that Jim talked about, that's been used as a past practice, then we can go with that. If there's another approach, we can go with that. Or if someone doesn't want to follow that recommendation that Natalie had and want to propose something else, I'm happy to entertain those thoughts as well. But you're right. We have, if that was the thought that everyone agreed to, we're not following that. Because you noted that there were some things that didn't get added. I could tell you right now that the two discussion items were added based on your request, and I didn't pull the board to add those. Those are added. So I will happy to follow whatever the board wants to do. As far as if the board, you know, wants to do that, I'm all for it. Takes less pressure off the board and the superintendent, and setting the agenda. So happy to do that.
So we have, we have a policy, Eric, that says this. So are you proposing we amend our policy?
Which policy are you talking about? Well, if, what does it say?
I read it. It says that. "Items submitted by board members to the superintendent or board president shall be placed on the agenda for the upcoming meeting."
Okay. So, I don't know. What do we want to do? Do we want to amend that policy and go with Natalie's? Do we want to, what do we want to do?
In all fairness, we need to be mindful of people's time. The idea that anybody can set a unilateral direction and take precious time from our admins without the will and consent of the other people at this table, this is not a unilateral approach. So if it's going to be on the agenda, and it's going to take people's time to get after it, and I think it has to be essentially certified it is the will of the board.
There's a couple misconceptions here, okay? So, I mean, we have a policy, right? So we're back to, we have a policy we should be following. So we're back to that. And if we're not going to follow it, then I would say it's not one person's unilateral option to not follow it also. So right now, our policy is that one person can do that. I've requested six times for the agenda to be, this is kind of weird, but it's, I requested that the agenda format be added to our agenda for February. And I just want to make note that you said that that didn't happen. I was never advised that you had polled people and that you discovered that five people did not want to add that. I was never responded to at all. So for you to say that you had established a poll outside of a meeting that we were going to change the format of our agenda that's been the same for more than 10 years without a conversation, alls I was saying is, let's talk about it. We're making a big change for our staff and our parent groups, and we should at least have a transparent conversation about it, instead of just taking one woman's. There's a lot of best practices, I can tell you, we don't follow. So, you know, I'm all about following best practices, but I also want to make sure that people understand why we're doing it, and it's not just one woman telling us one day, and then we just take the time away from people, including ourselves. This is our only meeting. If we don't discuss things now, it doesn't get discussed.
But we're actually not silencing anybody. We're not stopping anybody from talking.
We're stopping our board members from talking.
No, because we're, no, we're right here.
So the agenda used to have a discussion item, and on the discussion was public comment, and then the MTA, and it had, you know, three or four different groups, and the fourth one was the Board of Education. And that's when we can openly discuss things that we wanted to, you know, bring up while we're in one room able to talk.
But that's under discussion now for us to do that, right now, what we're doing. It's under our discussion.
So these, the number five on our agenda today is not, is not an open discussion time like it used to be. This is things that are specific discussions that have been added to the agenda. It's different from what it used to be.
I may, it was never an open discussion. Public comment is public comment. It's not open discussion. If you have something to say, I will sit here and listen. If Sam had something to say, I will sit here and listen. It is not a conversation. It is a time to listen. Whatever someone feels is important enough that they want to come up here and share that with us, but it is not a free-ranging discussion. Right now, we have discussion with two items that I understand you asked for, and we are freely discussing those items because we prepared and came here and read well over 300 pages on the back of this book, so we could have these discussions. As far as the agenda structure is concerned, quite honestly, that's a will of president. When it was mine, I moved it. That was within the last 10 years. And it used to be action requests were at the top of the meeting. I moved it at the end to give people more time to reflect and have conversations and have time to learn before committing an action. So the idea that this has been set and stowed for 10 years, it is not entirely accurate. Things do get moved around sometimes, just like things can get added to an agenda. But I'm always mindful of the time we are asking our admin and other people to take and prepare for these meetings. But public comment was never open discussion time.
No, no. It was called communications, and under communications, we had public comment. It was only one thing. Then we had the MTA, MCSA, MEF, PTA, and the Board of Education. So all of those groups had time, and we, and when I say the past 10 years, I went back and looked at 10 years ago, and those items were on the agenda the same as they were in January, before it was decided outside of a board meeting to change it and to take away the communications allocation on our agenda.
They still have the ability to share their voice. No one is silencing anyone. If any of you filled out a piece of paper, great, get up there and have the courage to share. That's cool. It's absolutely cool. But just because I don't have a board member slot on there doesn't mean I can't share something during public communication.
Jim?
Doesn't mean other people can't.
Yeah, Jim, so I'm going to embarrass myself right now. And say, so the discussion, removing the, and changing what the public communications section says, it didn't, it didn't trouble me because I know that there was an extension to the MTA, MCSA, PTA, MEF, to make sure that they know, please, come up and say something. So it didn't trouble me. You know, I went and looked at all of the surrounding districts, and it's in line with that. They do have a line for correspondence, which I can talk about later. But it just troubled me that as a professional courtesy, I asked that we discuss it so we don't get lost in the agenda that we can talk, okay? So here's the embarrassing part. Since we didn't have that discussion about, here's the change, and here's what it means to you, board members, especially you new board members that may not understand, I filled out a form because...
That's not embarrassing.
I was told, "No. You cannot speak." So there is where I have the trouble. This is a Board of Education meeting. So since we didn't have the conversation about, here's the change, here's how it affects you, even though I also asked, but I didn't have trouble because I knew that everyone would come up and talk, I was told, "No. I have trouble with that." So I'll let that go. If you can assure me, board members, that at the end of our agenda that says, "Discussion", we can still talk. Because when I brought that up last time, I was told, "Only if we talked about it previously." Okay? So understand that I got a little bit of frustration here, because there is this part of me that says, "We do need to talk and have this time," because not everybody, I've been told several times, "I don't have time outside of a board meeting. Let's wait till we're in session or the closed session, and we'll talk." But if we're going to start systematically removing things, that's how it was perceived by me, because I was told, "No." You know, you're going to, it's going to lead to these kind of misunderstandings. So I just want to make sure, because I like the for the good of Mokina, and usually everyone except for the MTA, the MTA is still here, and some of our community members, they stick around for that. But I like having that discussion up at the top sometimes, because I know a lot of people leave. And yeah, it got misused, because I had a lot of people attack me from around the table, and it got misused. So I see the good and bad in it. So let's just be clear about when we can talk and when we can't. But I love when people come and talk, and, "MTA, please start bringing back the teachers again and doing their..." I love having the second grade and social workers here, because we get to hear from everybody. So I, I don't know. My dad once said, "I like to talk to a chair." So I'm talkative. So I'll stop talking right now, but that's, that's what I have to say about some of my concern about the change. Thank you.
Well, it's, it wasn't embarrassing. Thanks for sharing.
Did you have a comment, Sam?
Sure do. Okay. So I just want to, I guess, kind of summarize real quick, because I'm sitting here wondering if we were all at the same meeting. We all did discuss this, and we all did get the same email that says, "This is what Dr. Williams is suggesting." As Eric mentioned, the will of, yes, we should follow, because it was also mentioned that we have their slated times. We're totally okay with filling out these papers that it had slated times. So we did all agree, or at least majority of us did agree, and that's why those changes were made. Nobody is saying that we can't talk. We can actually talk on every single one of these points. That's the discussion part that Eric says before he says, "Any votes or anything," or before we vote, I'm sorry, "Any discussions, any questions, anything like that." So we can talk at pretty much every single one of these points. Anything that wasn't discussed around the agenda already, correct me if I'm wrong, is item nine, next steps and follow-up related to discussion and/or action item. That's where we bring up the other things that we want to talk about. Unless I totally miss, we're not worried about. So we can talk, we can discuss, we can have multiple discussions about these things as we go through them. All we did was clean up the public communication thing, as was suggested, as is done by every other school district in the area and every other board I've ever been on, which is why I said, "Yeah, it's a great idea." So I don't agree that anything has been taken away from anybody. I think we just cleaned it up a little bit.
The only thing I would say is that when I said section nine is where we can talk, first, the answer was yes, and then the answer was, "Not only if it was previously discussed." So there was a caveat. So that's, if that's where it is, awesome. You know, that's all I'm asking, is clean it up. Yeah, I was in favor. Clean it up. Add correspondence, because I think that's part of our duty as well. But, you know, let's just make sure that we are in agreement that we can freely talk at that point. And I'm good.
Is that what, is that, is that right? Can we freely talk at that point? Did I get moved down to the bottom? Is that what you want?
I mean, we can, I would think whatever the board really wants to...
No one's, no one is trying to silence you.
Okay.
If we are having a conversation, like later, we're going to be talking about working cash notes. If you want to talk about working cash notes as we're going through it, have at it. That's the part of the agenda for it. It's okay. Totally cool.
Okay. So are we going to stick with our policy the way it reads now on how we add items to the agenda? Because our policy says that a board member can request it.
I think that's, that's the question for tonight. I think that has to get resolved. If, you know, Natalie has suggested something, board policy says something else, what do we want to do? What does the board want to do?
I believe that that's an interpretation thing. I could easily be wrong and disagreed with, but I think it's saying, "A board member can request" is exactly that, can request, and then the board president asking the will of the board is the decision. But that's just my take.
But that's not what it says. It says it will be added. A board member requests, and it will be added, is the second part of the sentence.
I recommend deferring it to the policy committee. Would that be acceptable? So then we can have a bigger discussion and move the agenda forward.
I think that's fine, except for are we going to follow the policy in the meantime? Because, you know, it's an active thing, right?
I think Eric has said he'll take a poll and share the poll if there's a problem with adding something. But, you know, I read the policy the same. If you ask, you know, let's just not abuse it. And I'm not saying that anybody has. I think the agenda topics are, have been reasonable to date. I'll leave it at that, and I just recommend deferring it to the policy discussion.
So that's Julie's thoughts. What, anyone else?
We need to move this meeting forward. I don't want to rush things, but, you know, I agree with you. Let's move it to the policy committee where we can have a discussion about it.
Which is fine. So then what am I doing in the interim? Am I just adding, or am I taking a poll? What do I want to do?
Are we actually motioning here, or are we just all agreeing on something? Because I totally motion to move as we ask you until we can decide on the policy.
Well, it's, it's, I don't know.
It says...
We don't have an action item for this, so it's difficult to take a vote on it, I think, at this point in time. But I can at least pull the board and say, "How would they like to proceed?" I think, or we just, I don't know. I'm at a loss of what to do, because I think we're disagreeing on how to proceed.
No, I think we can agree at this point, even though it's not an action item, we can agree that you will poll, if somebody wants to add something to the agenda, you will poll and disclose to everybody in a, in a reasonable timeframe what, what the result is, I guess.
All right. So I'm comfortable with that.
Until the policy committee.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I will follow that guidance going forward. Okay. Anything else on the agenda structure? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the finance committee.
Thank you, Dr. Shaw, for your presentation this evening. I don't have anything to add. All I have is for, our next meeting is May 13th, 7:00 p.m., and we are going to be looking at next year's calendar. Mr. Hansen is coming in. Heck. What's on May 13th's schedule?
Any questions for Lisa? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to superintendent.
I'm here tonight. Thank you very much for being here. Debbie, thanks always for all your work with Valley for a Cure. It was a great event. I know the Cancer Support Center really appreciates all the help. In addition, it is being a great fundraiser, also gets together our first responders with our teachers, and it's just a lot of fun. I'd like to thank the Mokina Educational Foundation for their rounds, recent rounds of funding. I believe they've donated, gosh, I think the final total's upwards of $30,000 in this latest round of funding. So thank you very much to the foundation for all of their work. I want to remind everyone, the Galaxy Award nominations are now open for nominating community members, staff, administrators, for work because it goes above and beyond behalf of our kids. On a sad note, in discussion today with our architect, Monday, May 13th, we will be turning the grounds of the wooden playscape over to the construction company to begin the process of turning that area into a play area for our Mokina Intermediate School students. of turning that area into a play area for our Mokina Intermediate School students. That means that some point in a week or so prior to that, we will be planning a final day of play. I would like to thank the PTA for their efforts on this. We'll, I know the PTA is stepping up to get some food trucks and some other things and we'll celebrate one community day on the playground. We'll be bringing out the, some old photos. I believe I have one of Mr. Hippelhauser in a dunk tank in 1997, which is a classic. But where I'm looking forward to that event, as much as it will be saying goodbye, it'll also be saying thank you for all the work and of those volunteers and all the fun that was had over the years. Board members at your places, you have a book called Essentialism. This book actually was a foundational piece of our beginning conversations with the building leadership teams. The book focuses on discerning what's really important. And that really is the work of our building leadership teams is as they try to improve student achievement, what, what are the things they can focus on that are going to be the key? Or as the way the book describes it, describes it, the essential few from the trivial many and maximizing return on our investment. The administrators were given a copy of that and I thought you could use it as well. It's a book that Nalia professionally, I think, is beneficial, but also personally. Had some conversations with the village administrator, village assistant village administrator, Monday's work session this past Monday, they've agreed to put on their agenda for next Monday. The, they plan on terminating their portion of the agreement between us, the village and Metro, for the Metro lot. That agreement was set to terminate after 25 years, so it was set to do, to terminate actually in 2028. But really, nobody's parking there anymore. They're not seeing any revenue. We use it more than they do. And so now the, once the board takes their action, the final step would be for Metro to agree to turn the lot back over to us. It is our property. And then we plan on working on maintaining that going forward. And then finally, as part of my report, there's a first read of a proposed policy board, policy 2150 on committees. That was requested that we look at that. We can do that, we can start that discussion now or we can table it for the eventual policy committee, whatever the board would prefer.
I, I would like to table it.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you for drafting the first draft.
Seven of us okay with that? All right, table it as.
That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Any questions, Dr. Cohen?
I appreciate the book.
I like it.
Okay, hearing no questions, Dr. Johnson?
Good evening. My report, I kind of have two pieces this evening. I have my typical report and then I do have a quick presentation regarding my recommendation for the adoption of the sixth through eighth grade ELA program. For my report, as always, they provided a summary of the March early, March professional development, which included our early release day, as well as the addition of a lesson study full day professional development that our kindergarten through third grade teachers went through a few weeks ago. I do want to thank Mrs. Robert, Mrs. Macy, Ms. Boily and Ms. Tabor for being our lesson study teachers. We had 10 adults in the room with all the students watching the lesson, so I appreciate their willingness to teach in front of their peers and kind of be the ones on, I don't say the stage, but in a sense on the stage teaching the lesson that we worked through together. So I do really appreciate their willingness to do that. I also provided an update regarding where we are in our work with Northwestern Center for Talent Development. I do have an update even since my board report. We actually did have visitors from Northwestern onsite yesterday, today and tomorrow observing in our classrooms. We, by the end of the day tomorrow, we will have had 33 classrooms visited to observe our ELA math core instruction as well as our WIN and ICE time within each of the MES and MIS as well. So again, I want to thank the teachers for come on in, see what we do. I'm excited to see, you know, in addition to all the other work that Northwestern is doing, their, the outcomes of their observations and general trends that they've seen. I did provide just a little blurb in terms of where we are with our e-learning plan renewal. April may be a stretch, but for sure in May at least having an informational item with our recommendation with the e-learning committee work. I do want to thank our parents as well as our teachers who have provided feedback to us via the survey. It was really helpful for our parent advisory committee to be able to dig into the 200, 300 responses. I know Ms. Oss was there with us and digging in to really see what our parents had to say regarding their feedback from the parent perspective, which will be very helpful for our committee. I do have an additional topic. I do want to make you aware that if you are a parent in the district, you will receive a letter tomorrow from me regarding the upcoming celestial event that will be taking place with the solar eclipse. We are hoping to get as many third through eighth graders as we can outside with district purchased glasses to be able for them to view the eclipse. We will be seeking parent permission though, knowing that there is some safety, you know, pieces with that behind it. So we are looking forward to that in April. And with that being said, I do then have some information for you regarding our sixth through eighth grade ELA program adoption recommendation. We have done a lot of work. Mr. Ger Martinez is here as well as the ELA department chair at the junior high over the past 12 months to get to this place tonight. I believe the quote was, this is the first time in 15 years has the degree done something as a department. So that is, so, yeah, so that is like a good positive way, you know, to start, start talking about the program that we are recommending for you this evening. Lincoln, if you wouldn't mind, go, going ahead and putting the presentation up there. I did just want to provide you with an overview, a high level overview of the program, some of the highlights, what we will expect that to look like for our teachers and our students should you move to approve this program at the April board meeting. While I'm talking, I did bring some samples of the student materials for you to look at, you know, throughout the evening while I'm giving the presentation. I do want to add that these materials, this plus a lot more, is set up on a table in district office for staff members, board members, community parents to come in if you'd like to take a look at those pieces. Those will be on display until the next board meeting. So we've got some of the novels, and this is just a handful because I didn't want to bring it all in, but some of the novels that are available for our teachers to choose from within the various units. And then I did bring as well the first unit, student consumable, that all of our students will have as well paired with, with the novels, if you want to take a peek at what those look like as well. All right, so big picture program organization for Study Sync, which is the program we are making the recommendation for. One of the pieces that really drew us to this program is that it was built specifically for students in grades six through 12. We did look at some programs that were K8 and one of the things, you know, the department really appreciated is this program was really looking at our adolescents and really looking at a program and a structure that meets the needs of that age of students. A bonus item, this is the program that is utilized by Lincoln Way Central in their freshman courses, which will be a nice transition for our students as they move over to the high school after leaving eighth grade. One of the big pieces, again, we were very focused on is ensuring that the program was specifically aligned to the ELA standards for Illinois as well. Each grade levels program is centered around six units of instruction, very similar to our K5 programming. It is framed around an essential question or a big understanding and all of our texts are leading to an understanding or to be able to answer that question. It's all integrated with listening, speaking, reading, writing and thinking as opposed to kind of looking at those pieces in isolation. They all work together to help students get to that larger essential question. One of the pieces that we did appreciate as well is that there are, if you instruct upon the first four units, you are actually covering all of the standards, which allows us a little bit more flexibility in bringing in additional novels to support the instruction as well. Here is a, here are the topics and essential questions for each grade level. I know you have a copy of this report, so I won't go through this very specifically, but you can see how these topics are appealing to our students. The learning and the essential question that they will be working around are really high level questions. They dig deep into themselves, into society and all of the texts that they're reading and the writing that they're doing, again, is aligned to these topics and getting them to that essential question understanding. The text selections, like I've mentioned, do build towards that essential question and that essential understanding. There is the anthology that Mr. Bush has right now that's passing around are text excerpts from a variety of texts that students will have, a consumable book that they can write in, they can annotate, they can take notes in. And then in addition, there are novel pairings and there's several per unit that our teachers can choose based on their students and their needs in the classroom to accompany the student anthologies that are coming around as well. In addition, the online component provides students with an additional 1,500 texts that they can choose from for independent reading as well. The texts are, really embed that multicultural piece and aspect. The program utilizes, which is a well-known method of thinking about that aspect, the mirrors, the windows and the doors, when they think about the selections that are chosen for students. So mirrors, there's texts that will reflect the diversity and experiences of all of our students in the classroom. They should be able to see themselves in the texts. The windows allow them to view out other cultures and experiences that they may personally not go through. And then doors, it's allowing them to kind of go in and out of those pieces. So we see all of our students represented in the texts and they will be able to see that when they, they go through the text throughout the year. Like I mentioned, the, the program is built around the sixth through eighth grade Illinois Learning Standards in Literature, Informational Text Writing, Language and Grammar and Speaking and Listening. And in addition to that, the Illinois Standards, which is through Common Core, does set a complexity band that is for sixth through eighth grade that they encourage all of texts to be within, thinking about college and career and the level of text that students will encounter, whether that's in their career or at college. So we're working towards that if we can provide students access to the level text that the Common Core requires and this program meets that need. So when we think about how the program addresses the aspects of the standard, when we think about text complexity, as I just mentioned, students are going to be frequently visiting a grade level appropriate complex text in all of the grade levels. There's a variety of genre and text length, which we really appreciated as we went through the program. There's going to be something that connects to all students. And in additional piece, there's embedded scaffolds that our students who may need additional support have access to and that their teachers can help them access so that all students have access to grade level texts, not some. In addition, vocabulary is addressed in several different ways. There's selection vocabulary, skill vocabulary, academic vocabulary. And there's an emphasis on really figuring out word for, words from context, which is one of the major focuses of the language or vocabulary standards for the Common Core. Students are going to be engaging in close reading throughout the program. What that means is that they will be reading the same text multiple times for different purposes. So they read it once to gain an understanding, but then they dig deeper into a certain aspect of the text as they read it again and again, which is very similar to what's happening in our K5 classrooms. And then the lessons are rooted in text dependent questions, which is another aspect of Common Core that we look for in, in our programming. In terms of volume of reading, there's multiple texts that students will be engaging with throughout the unit. And like I mentioned earlier, there's also embedded novel studies that we will be incorporating throughout each unit as well. Researching is a big aspect of it as well. Students will have multiple opportunities to gather evidence from different sources before they begin writing. And there are additional materials available for our teachers who may need to provide extra support for students who might need work in fluency and foundational skills, which will be very helpful for our special education department as well. In terms of writing, our writing is going to really reflect their content understanding and their knowledge around that essential question. It's very aligned to that unique topic, as I had mentioned earlier. And they are gathering that evidence and thinking about their writing throughout the units based on the text that they're reading. There is instruction on writing skills such as how do I write an introduction or how do I use transitions? But then there's also instructions on different approaches to writing as well. Students are going to be writing a lot in the program, which is exciting because I know that's like a big initiative at the junior high. They'll be writing shorter responses as well as lengthier essays that maybe we would be used to from our time in school as well. And students will be moving through the writing process every unit with a lengthier writing piece too. And there is lots of opportunities for peer feedback in that as well. In terms of language, what we may think of as traditionally with grammar, there is instruction throughout each unit, specifically in the writing component, where students are receiving grammar skills lessons and then they're immediately applying it into their writing as opposed to learning it in isolation. And there are some additional resources available for the teachers to add on to that if needed, based on their students and the needs that they're noticing. Speaking and listening, students are almost daily having discussions in small groups through something called text talks where they're working with each other, they're having conversations. One of the neat pieces too in the program is that they have a feature called Study Sync TV where it's actual students of age of the students in the classroom modeling discussions, modeling how to disagree, modeling how to come to an understanding so that when they're then let loose to have those discussions themselves, they've had that model that they can go back and have sentence starters or frames to be able to have those discussions in a productive way together. Students will also have an extended oral project once throughout the year as well where they're in front of their class presenting something and working on those more formal presentation skills. In terms of assessment, the program is full of many different opportunities for assessment, whether that be formative or summative. All of the assessments are aligned to standards. There is a pretty robust data reporting system that our teachers have access to as well that give them information on how their students are performing related to each standard so they can make data-informed decisions in their classroom based on assessments results. They are customizable, which was an aspect from our special education teacher's perspective that allow them to meet the needs of students with potential accommodations or modifications based on their IP goals. And like I mentioned, the assessments feed into that data tracking tool that will be a nice feature that we currently don't have, that really allow our teachers to get the best sense of where our students are related to the standards. We will be recommending the purchase of both the print and digital components, so it is like a hybrid model. So the teachers and the students would have both access to the print and digital features. The program allows the teachers to switch seamlessly between both, which is really important because we know our students need time on devices, learning digital literacy skills and how do I read something that's on the computer? It is a different skill than reading something in a book. So they'll have opportunities to work through both and the teachers will have their discretion to make those decisions based on what they feel is best for their students based on the text. Again, there's a lot of different ways that the program builds in supports for teachers and students to meet the needs of many different types of learners. I did provide just a list for you of some of those different pieces that are available and this is not an exhaustive list, but just meant to show that there's things for our teachers and for our students that will help them meet the needs of all the learners in their classroom. So what does this look like in practice? And just to kind of give you a quick snapshot, like I mentioned, there are six units that can span from six to nine weeks. It's based around that topic, that essential question. There's specific, a specific writing task aligned to that at the end of the unit. We have targets that are very specific throughout each text that are aligned to standards and we have many texts within a unit that our students will access to help get to those skills and that understanding. I did provide a quick snapshot for you, which I know you do have access to, so I'm going to kind of go through this quickly for time's sake. But just to really see how the program kind of rolls out a unit and what that experience would look like for a student. So here, this was actually the unit eighth grade did pilot called Hear Me Out. It was unit four. And the essential question was how do you choose the right words? And the root of this was really, at the end, they have to come back and write a, an argumentative piece about, you know, how do you choose the right words? And actions always speak louder than words. Is that saying true? And they're using all of the text and evidence they're collecting throughout to put that argumentative piece together. As you can see, they're going to be visiting many, many different types of texts to either study craft or to study how someone approached an argument, whether that's through the Gettysburg Address or listening to a speech that's been conducted to really study the aspect of argument and then hopefully use those pieces that they're learning about and applying it into their own writing. And then I provided an example of one of the novels that could potentially be used to support this as well. I know you've got this, so again, I'm not going to go super in depth, but I wanted to at least provide for you so you could get the feeling for how that unit would play out for a student over the six to nine weeks as they move from text to text to text and then into that writing piece that. then into that writing piece that also again supports that larger understanding, how they're using different texts as mentors, using different texts as collecting research evidence to really be able to come away with that bigger understanding through different genres, different lengths of text and again, how that plays out, you know, from the beginning of the unit till the end of the unit. So I will leave that for you to kind of take a peek at between, if you haven't already, between now and the next meeting and I'd be happy to walk you through that further, either one-on-one or you know, even next meeting as well. But again, just wanted you to see how all these pieces really come together to provide that well-rounded experience for students in the ELA classroom in sixth through eighth grade. The last piece in my presentation, I did just want to provide just another source of certainty that this program is of quality. Ad Reports is a nonprofit independent group that looks at programs that districts can adopt and they do provide ratings to those based on quality of text, alignment to the standards, are they building knowledge and are they easy to use? And this received all green, which is the highest rating that the programs can receive through this particular group. So again, just another level of reassurance that, you know, we're not the only ones that think this is a great program, that there are other groups as well that have thoroughly reviewed this and see it as of high quality. I do have Mr. Martinez here as well. I know he had a couple thoughts to share just from his department's perspective. We've worked really closely together on this, so hopefully he would be in the grants with everything I'm saying, but he has just been an absolute instrumental piece in supporting the department the past 12 months, you know, under his leadership. We've had change in personnel over the past year as well and I just cannot say enough about, you know, working with you and getting to this point. So if you wouldn't mind sharing.
Sure. I have been working on this for quite some time and I've been working in the district on language arts for 20 some years now, been through book adoptions. The current literature books I have in my room were adopted when my partner, eighth grade teacher, was one years old. So just to know why. The process here, the part that Dr. Johnson left out is how good she is at her job. This process was thorough, as I'll get out and I've been through a lot of curriculum adoptions. The fact that we were allowed to pilot these things, spent a quarter on two of the programs that we narrowed it down to, and we got this tool, learn them inside and out so that we can make a more decision that comes September, we're not going, well, we can't learn, there's something to it, right? And that would have been the first one that we piloted after week one, all of us were involved, were full of saying, I don't know if I can do another five weeks of this. But as we got more into it, we could see some value to it and we started to see the cumulative effect, what, well, maybe is there something here? It took a little time to get to that. So we worked for that first, second quarter. Third quarter, we've been working through steps and things. There's growing pains when you've got a grand program. We appreciate the patience and support we've gotten from our administration and the board to do this. We had great, great gains last year in language arts. We were thrilled and lauded for the success we had and then we hit pause. We said, everything we did last year, literally we put on hold in language arts for the long term, but there's other things we need to fix. We think we've got an idea of where we're heading, right? There's holes in other parts of our program to address and we need to look at resources to do that. And I think through this program, we found something that we're comfortable with, that we're happy with, and I think it's not out of words, so. So from, you know, Paul and Jenny and Allison in sixth grade, from Melissa and Erin and Kevin in seventh grade, Hannah, Natalie and myself in eighth grade, we know there's a lot of heaven lifting coming up next year as we implement a new system and learn it, get familiar with it, but rather than being daunted by that, we're actually excited by it. And yes, we joked early on that we had consensus the first time. It's true. We're language arts, we like to argue. We're verbal people and we like to argue over things. We could spend our whole meeting talking about the difference we could and should on something. So to have us agree, go, this is the program that we think will work best for us, that we're going to be able to do the writing stuff that has made us successful and build in the other gaps, I think is an exciting sort of thing. One other feature about this, it integrates nicely with Google, or Google School. The fact that when you click aside in StudySync, it imports it into your Google Classroom automatically. When it grades things in StudySync, click the dropdown, it exports that back to your classroom, which then Skybird can pull the grades from classroom. The fact that you can integrate all of that stuff is another feather in account of this The last thing that I want to mention is the integration between textbook and digital teaching. I love that aspect to it, but there are elements where it's better on paper, which is needs to be. And so being able to have all of those resources and watching those charts grow, where's the best place for this or that is going to be one of the things we have to play around with next year. It's a resource, it's going to, it's going to require storage, it's going to require all that stuff, it goes with a physical entity. But when you watch what our students are doing, whether at the activity, writing, it's really exciting to see where we're going. So I think on behalf of all of the language arts department, we're pleased with the direction we're going and we're excited where we're headed. If you have any questions, of course, in terms of purposes, just back. So we've been using this since January, we're using parts that continuing on playing around with the things we have, like we had through this one. I'll give anything along that on this case. And if you come up with something over time after this, shoot me an email, respond, come over and see, I'll show you. Okay, so that's great. So thank you, Dr. Johnson, thank you, Dr. Rollins for helping us and supporting us and so, whatever.
All right. Any questions we can answer this evening?
And I know the answer, I believe, but you know, first, thank you and your colleagues and couldn't agree more about Dr. Johnson. I always feel so prepared with the information that you give us and working so hard on this to let us know that you like it. I also see it with my kids. You may feel like you paused your progress, but I still see progress. I see it with my boys. You continue and your teams continue to do good jobs. So my question is, and it's a silly question, but you feel like this aligns really well with CER, right? Like there's no new buzzwords that you have to teach the kids?
It uses CER.
It does, you said. Okay, perfect. And I think it's going to set up the kids for such success that it flows into the high school. Kudos, you guys. Thanks.
I want to say thank you too, you guys. I was really glad to hear you guys were so excited about this because I'm sitting here as these books are coming around and I didn't want to pass them on to Julie. I love books, I love feeling them, smelling them, it makes me happy. To hear, to hear what you guys are doing, I'm so excited for you guys and for the kids. I'm so excited. Thank you guys so much for doing this. This is so exciting.
You're going along with that. Dr. Johnson tells us, she says, I was skeptical about any system going into that. I'm a home cook when it comes to curriculum. I've built everything that I've done over the course of my career from scratch. Beg, Mark, it's stealing from any source I can, but assembly it myself. So to look at somebody else's stuff and think I'm going to use somebody else's materials makes me itch, but I feel like we still got room in here to do our thing and take these materials and make them even better. So they want to be older.
That's awesome. Well, if you find an older student in one of your classrooms one day, I might be.
She can come teach the Alyxese for admission less than max.
I, you know, I commend everybody involved in this. You can clearly see the amount of effort and work and really you guys not only did the work, but I think you did a fabulous job of communicating the work that you did, summarizing it, you know, supporting the decision, getting everybody comfortable and, you know, sold. And my only question is, as far as what we anticipated for cost?
Yes.
And how that compares to the actual cost of this?
Sure, sure. I did provide that information in the questions. I know that was the question that was submitted to me last, so I don't know if you had a chance to review that.
I saw it. I just didn't know, I was, I guess, I did see the cost.
Sure.
But my question now is, how did that, how does that compare to what we thought it would be? Or, you know, what we anticipated?
What we anticipated, yeah. I mean, this is actually not very costly, like when you do look at other, you know, programs, I feel like it's a good cost for the quality of the program that we're going to get. Is that what you're asking? Like in comparison to what we were expecting? Yes. I would, I say we're at a better spot than I would have expected. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yep, yep.
And my only last thought is the data. I mean, I think that that just goes so well with our district, you know, whole thought that we need to be getting this data to analyze the decisions that we're supporting the decisions we're making. And I just love how it all kind of flows in and out and you guys get it. It's fabulous.
Exactly. When you go into, what is their digital grade book? One of the few buttons, you have view and you can look at my standards or there's another setting where you can sort it by, but it'll show you the students and it'll list, it'll show bar graph. And it lists standards at the bottom and bar graph, if it's green, then that means they have exceeded or met or exceeded on that yellow or red depending on how they perform on each of the language arts standards. So you'll be able to see each one of those things for each kid.
You could do that in real time.
You can? You got to be careful because if you miss one question, you may be in the red. But yeah, you can see that stuff as it comes up, which is fascinating.
Part of the fun of this job is getting good people together that have a common interest in trying to get the kids to succeed. And I get to sit back and just enjoy being part of it and giving you guys the tools with the talent you already have to really focus on these kids. And I can see the joy in your faces and absolutely love it. And the money's fine. It all makes sense. The fact that how it all ties in is nice. I love seeing you guys excited. I really do. It's good for the kids, it's good for making the program better, you've got good people in the right places. So I'm glad. I've known you a long time. I appreciate the effort.
At least, at least you have heard it through a great time. Someday.
All right. Well, thank you for listening and like I mentioned, we will bring this then to you in April as an action item for formal adoption with implementation then for next school year. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Next up is Mrs. Volpe.
Hi there. Can you, can you hear me? I don't have near as much information and experience with StudySync, but I have had an opportunity to work very briefly with the coach at the junior high and she kind of walked me through it. And I'm very excited about all of the extra resources, not only for students with disabilities, but those students that have EL needs as well. So I think it's going to be an excellent program for all of our students. I shared with you that I've been attending a lot of student meetings. It's springtime in special education, which means meeting after meeting after meeting. But it's been great for me to be able to provide some of that kind of onsite coaching and development of all of our staff in terms of procedures that we need to follow to be legally compliant as well as, you know, how to have some of those difficult conversations with parents to help them understand as well as placement. So things are going well. I'm in the process of writing a grant that will bring us just over $100,000. This was something that was originally applied for, but never really completed. And we still have an opportunity to do that, so I'll be finishing that up and submitting to ISB over spring break next week. Continue working on staffing. We just onboarded our new phenomenal psychologist, Becky, and have identified a new OT to fill some of our FTE for last year and continue to kind of review our teaching staff for special education, some of the applications that are coming in and we'll work with our building administrators to fill those positions over the next few weeks so that when our new director, Megan, comes on board, hopefully we'll have everything wrapped up. And our goal is to do all of this early so that we have the best candidates available. We will be interviewing for our special education coordinator on April 9th. Very excited about that. The hope is that we will be able to, I'll be able to maybe start some training this year depending on who the candidate is. We do have three internal candidates and is now posted externally, so we look forward to that. And I think that's it for now.
Any questions for Mrs. Volpe?
Quick one. Are we doing the summer Olympics at the school this year?
So actually, I don't know about the summer Olympics, but I know some of the...
Sorry, I'm probably using the wrong term.
Yeah, no, there was some young athletes.
Okay, thank you.
I know that we sent out an email on that and Mrs. Torley, do we have an...
Yeah, I think the feedback from staff was due to the transition with Mrs. Volpe, that it was just...
Too much.
Too much in a short period of time. It wasn't something that the staff could accomplish.
I missed it last year, I didn't want to miss it, so thank you.
No, we're shooting for next year for sure, bringing it back.
And I apologize, I would love to have been able to be able to organize that, but given the situation right now, I'm just not able to do that.
No problem at all. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Dr. Shaw, you're back up.
Thank you. Got a couple information items that'll be action items next month. Student fees, student fees are scheduled to remain the same except for lunch. Lunch scheduled to increase just to be in alignment with the National School Lunch Program. And then we've got our summer helpers. We're asking for approval to hire our summer helpers again. There will be one change from the information item to the action item for the tech summer helpers. We are going to request 3.0 next month rather than the 2.5 that you saw in today's information item. You're welcome. And then just a couple information items, the spring break, Mr. Rana's got spring break cleanup with some mulch, some playground mulch. And then just cleaning up the grounds, getting rid of some dead bushes and making it just look wonderful when our kids come back from spring break. We do also have our, just for your information, the maintenance contract with Alpha, we have the ability to extend that contract for a year. We're going to go ahead and do that. We did hire a new bus driver, a local resident, so we're hoping that a local resident bus driver stays with us for a long time because we really like him so far. And then next month's, or tonight's action items have got the seal coating and flooring projects that our architect talked about and then approving the restructured governance of the co-op that we've been a member of for the last 12 years. That's all I've got to add. Thank you.
To Dr. Shaw. Okay, hearing none. Thank you. Mr. Henson.
I only have two items on my report. One of them is an information item, hopefully be an action item next month. I did put in front of all the board members the quote I received from YNS on the teacher laptop purchase. It's very reasonable. The next closest quote I got was for the same device, for $45,000 more. I did talk about a little bit about the laptops last, my last month's report. I think they're going to be great. This was our champion laptop that we liked before going into the Brainstorm Conference. We know that they'll work with the current equipment in the classroom, you know, it'll work with the current chargers plus as well the new Chromebook chargers. They're kind of interchangeable. I just wanted to clarify one part of my report. I said that this puts us shy, 45K shy under the budget. This purchase is a, is the big chunk of a three-part purchase. We still have to do the Parapros and the administration devices as well under the same budget. Just doing the quick math, I still think will still be 10 to 15 under the total budget for that. I still think we'll still be 10 to 15 under the total budget for that. Second part was Brainstorm. I just did a quick recap of our experience, and I also included two of my texts, and, you know, what we learned and all it was. So I do have one action item for the network refresh with Urban Communications, and that is all I have for this evening. Are there any questions?
Any questions? No? Okay. All right.
I'm sorry. I, can we go back to Dr. Shaw? I forgot to ask a question. Is that possible?
Sure.
Um, Dr. Shaw, where, on the student fees, where does summer band fall? Is that a, is that a club, or is that just like banned a sport, I guess? Or, and then do we have summer school? Do we have a fee for that that is...
We do not have summer school. And...
We do have summer.
We do not.
Oh, we do not.
Do not have summer school. Sorry. Not. Uh, summer band, how it has, we don't have, I don't know. You got, do we have summer band? Summer band, how it's worked in the past was it was done through the music booster, so we paid our teacher. They gave us a check for what we paid the teacher for. I'm not sure how it's going to work this summer, that , so the personnel report that teacher's not going to be here. So I don't, I don't know what's going on with summer band. I, I don't know.
Can I try and answer a little bit?
Okay.
It is going to be different this year, because it did used to go through the boosters. This year will be the first year it doesn't. We usually establish a fee based on the number of days that the students go to summer band, and then that, it just pretty much goes to pay for the teacher's time to be in the program. It's going to be over at MIS this year, because we won't have any air conditioning. So that information will probably be coming out. Usually it's early May that goes out, but it normally doesn't fall under the fee list, because it's, it's an after-contract-year kind of thing. So it's never been on there before. So, I mean, it always could be. I, we can talk about that if we need to put it on there. But it's usually, like I said, just based on the number of days that the, the teacher's going to be here. And we will probably use the same model that we had when the music boosters was doing it. I don't have that right in front of me right now. I don't know what it is, but I can tell you before next meeting.
That's a good point. Yet it hasn't ever fallen in the, the student fees.
Yeah, I was just curious. I saw the, I saw the email. I think there was an email that went out, you know, saying that it was coming up, like that it was happening, and then I noticed it wasn't on here. And so I guess, I think what you're saying is it's not a stipend, that it's not on the stipend schedule?
No, it's not part of the Schedule B stipends, no.
Okay, so I don't know if that's...
Well, in the, it used to run summer camps, and the summer camps were the same way when we had athletic summer camps. And the athletic summer camps, it usually paid a... the hourly rate that we, you know, that we pay our teachers. It's just based on doing it. It's loosely affiliated with what we do. Yeah, it is not a contractual stipend right now, although it'll be something we have to work out.
Okay. So I think we, Mr. Henson got off the hook with no questions, and now we're on to principal reports. Yeah. Mr. McAtee, you can go first. You made eye contact. That's bad.
Just real quick, I have three thank yous that I want to share. Number one, I want to thank our special ed staff. They've been working hard. You know, we're trying to collaborate to create a schedule at MIS that is better servicing our students. We're kind of readjusting some of our classes, some of our, you know, where the students meet, when they meet, to really utilize the strengths of our staff. So some staff might be doing fourth and fifth, depending on, you know, their, their strengths and so forth. So I want to thank our special ed staff. They've done a great job. We've met quite a few hours, and we think we have a good plan in place moving forward. I want to thank our music directors, Mrs. Bucin, Ms. Clifford, and Ms. Snyder. We had our concert last week. It was phenomenal. Sold-out house. It wa, it was great to see all the people, and the, and the kids just love seeing all the parents there. So, great job with that. And then I want to thank the PTA. They're putting on a MIS drawing night coming up on April 5th. In the past, we've had a draw, a family drawing night, but it's been kindergarten through fifth. So the, the drawings have not always been, they've been a little elementary for some of our students. So now it's really focused on just fourth and fifth. They're going to be doing some anime stuff. It's really going to be a really nice event. So it's on Friday the 5th. If you want to come out, learn how to draw some anime, that would be wonderful. That's all I've got.
A question to Mr. McAtee. Okay, thank you. Uh, Mrs. Torley.
I also would like to thank MEF and PTA for funding some of our really fun things that are happening at MES right now. Very lucky and grateful to have these two organizations support us. We are losing two of our office members, our office staff administrative assistants, Kelly Lynn and Judy Mueller Schoen. They are moving over to district office, and we are very thrilled for them. It's a great opportunity, but we are sad, because they're really important to us. But they'll be amazing. And on that note, we'd like to welcome Nicole Goodkind, who has moved into our administrative assistant one position in our, in our office. So we're really excited about that. She brings a lot of experience and ideas, so it'll be fun to get to know her and work with her. Today, we had, we held a full day of interviews for third grade and kindergarten open positions. I'd like to thank our BLT for, it's really, we, we grabbed two awesome, awesome candidates that we're, will be bringing forward for board approval at the next meeting. So we're really, really thrilled about that. I'd also like to thank Mrs. Pyrick and all of the volunteers that did our MES Family Night. We had over 500 children attend that event, so that was amazing. It's always a whirlwind. It goes so fast, those two hours. And it was just an incredible night. And Mrs. Pyrick never ceases to amaze me with her creativity, and her enthusiasm, and her go-gettedness, and, and she just, and everybody just knocked it out of the ballpark. They did a phenomenal job. And finally, I'd like to thank Victoria Clifford, who's moving on up to the junior high. We are so sad to be losing her. She's done amazing things for the music program at MES. She's really built up our inventory of instruments. Our students have greatly benefited from her expertise and her guidance. It's always been my hope, and as we work together, that we would, at MES, really build a solid foundation for our students as they transition up to MIS and to the junior high, to grow our music program. I am not musical, but I love music. And so it's just been such a joy to work with Ms. Clifford. She is just, she's phenomenal, and so I'm really, really excited for her. But we'll be interviewing for that position as well. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Torley? Okay, all right. Thank you. Next up, Dr. Olinitis.
You need to make eye contact. So a couple things. So since our last meeting, we had, we also had a really nice band concert, so congratulations to all the students and the, and the staff who put that on. It was fantastic. We also had the musical. I know many of you attended the musical. The kids did a fantastic job. It was a short, condensed season, but I want to congratulate them for putting on a good show. They really did do a nice job. I want to update my, my report. I had to write it before I knew what was going to happen with volleyball. So as you know, the seventh grade volleyball and eighth grade volleyball both made it to state. It was fantastic this year. We've never had that before. The last time the seventh grade team qualified for state, we had to tell them that literally the day that we shut the world down in, in 2020, that they weren't going to get to go to the contest. We actually had a really good chance of winning that year, the whole thing. So that's the last time the seventh grade qualified. So eighth grade went, or seventh and eighth grade both went down, went to, uh, Blewington Normal, the other went to Morton. Unfortunately, we lost in the first round, but we were pretty excited to be there. They played really hard. And congratulations to all the coaches and the girls for doing their very, very best. We had, this last weekend, we had quite a few students who had artwork hung up at Lincoln Way East, at the Lincoln Way Arts Festival, so we're very proud. And we're art teachers, so I have to make sure I get that out there, that fine arts are very important for our kids. And thank you to Ms. Vishi for putting all that together for, for the students to have their artwork displayed. And then my last thing is, I can't, I can't go without thanking Dr. Johnson, and I know Mr. Vroom is here, but the entire ELA department. They're not exaggerating that this was a, a, a difficult decision, them to, to, a difficult decision for them to even look, because we did have success. Clearly, you guys know, we had some pretty tremendous success, but, you know, you don't let good be the enemy of great. So we all realized that we had a lot of holes, and that there were things that maybe this is as far as we could go on our own. And Mr. Martinez is gone now, but he is 100% sure. I, if he was standing right here, I'd say he was not for this at all, walking in the door. I mean, that's not even a question. But we did it, and he's now a believer. So, and he, we, we had a great opportunity, Dr. Johnson's process for this, to have them go through and, and use the data to decide why we were going to do this, not just, I like it. It was concrete as to why we're moving forward with this. We sat out in the sun. We, we took picnic tables out, went outside on that early release day, and had a nice, a long discussion, went through the rubrics, and came to the conclusion. So it's nice to see people excited, like Jim said, about curriculum, you know, that they want to teach this. They're looking forward to digging in, and I think it's going to dovetail nicely with what they're doing at MIS. And we know it, it meshes nicely with what they do at the high school. So, you know, they're, they're worried. I know they're worried about their scores this year, but I don't, I'm not seeing a drop. I, I don't see Paul's got his fingers crossed, but I meet with everybody, I meet with them once a month, and I get to talk to them, and I, I think our kids are doing very, doing really well. So I'm proud of the work that they've done. And again, thank you to the ELA team and Dr. Johnson for leading that out. That's all I have.
Questions, Dr. Olinitis? Okay, thank you, Dr. Olinitis. Next up is Mrs. Briscoe, 43.
Of course, Mr. Engler, it would give me a long report tonight of all nights, but I'll try to make this brief. So Mr. Engler did a comprehensive projection by fund of both revenue and expenditures and cash flows. So he says, please note the following. Bus monitors were not billed to member districts last week, or the billing last month. The amount that is normally billed is an estimated amount by budget. So Mr. Engler is going to try to project the end-of-the-year cost and price per district, so that the final two bills should get districts very close to zero refunds, or underbilling as possible for the monitors, rather, rather than just trying to make up two months of estimates. Do you guys get that? Ending 6:30, 24, cash is projected as follows. Education fund is $1,600,000, O&amp;M $50,000, and transportation is $82,000. O&amp;M and transportation will have small balances at the end of June with member districts due to pay their pre-billing by July 1st. Mr. Engler's current refund projection is as follows. Education is $400,000, O&amp;M is $50,000, and transportation is $82,000. These are just projected numbers due to, we still have some school left here. Mr. Engler does not recommend making any tuition changes at this time. That's it on finances. And action items, the governing board approved technology for $41,057.60. We approved Infintech Coalition membership for the amount, oh, no, for the, all right, let me start over. We approved the Illinois Infintech Coalition for 24-25 school year. And then we approved the SICCH, our auditors, for three years of $33,000. And then, this is good stuff from, from Mr. Romeo. He's, this is his, his report, and he's, we are currently at 55% of our students in at least one academic and general education class, with one more student adding a class at the junior high. Really good news is that one of their students, seventh grader, and I asked for permission to, to announce the student of the month. This is something new that they just did, and the first student of the month at the SELF program. Her name is Reagan Thompson. She's a seventh grader, and her mom said, please feel free to share her name. So please, if you see her in your building at the junior high, please congratulate her. And, let's see. The focus for, for the SELF is family and parent engagement, and continuing to sustain positive relationships with their families. And next month, you will focus on teacher clarity in the classroom. And upcoming family, the upcoming, this, tomorrow, Thursday, we will be hosting breakfast with the Easter Bunny at MES from 7:30 to 8:30 in the multipurpose room. Next month, we will be working with Pioneer Grove to set up a date for crosstown exotic animals to come in. And that's it. Oh, ESY? Yeah, yes, yes. Yes, Julie did ask about ESY. I wrote that down over here. ESY begins June 17th, runs through July 18th. The time period is, I believe, 8:30 to 11:00.
And, and what building is it this year? I forget.
Pioneer Grove, right.
Pioneer. Is it, I think they rotate it. Is it? Okay. Sorry, I'm...
No, no, it's okay.
I appreciate that. I know that there are some folks that, that come, that benefit from coming to, you know, to the meetings and, and the other programs that we offer.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. It rotates.
They're doing some work, I think, on the building, Mr. Andrew. They're having it in a member. The actual location.
Okay. We'll have it next meeting. No problem.
Yeah, I can't remember where.
And Grand, I want to say Grand Prairie, but...
Go up to that.
Fantastic.
I'm usually how about, is that a reference? Yeah.
Right. It's, it's a great program. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't lose sight of it. Thanks, Anna.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mrs. Briscoe? Okay, moving on. Warrior requests, we've completed those. Action requests. Move on. Approval of the previous minutes.
As we started, I move to approve the minutes from the February 21st, 2024, regular session and closed session meetings as presented.
Seconded by Lisa. Any discussion? Please call a vote.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Okay, motion pass. Next up is bills for the month. Julie?
Yeah, I reviewed the bills this morning. I shared all the questions with all the board members that I went through with Dr. Shaw. Thank you, Dr. Shaw. All of my questions were surrounding food co-op, and just a few miscellaneous, just tracking more than anything. And she answered all the questions that, that took away any concerns I may have. And I would move to approve the monthly bills as presented.
Seconded.
Seconded by Anna. Any discussion? Please call a vote.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Okay, motion pass. Next up is personnel.
I move to approve personnel recommendations. 105 S.
Seconded by Jim. Any discussion? Please call a vote.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Okay, motion pass. Next up is consent agenda.
I move to approve consent agenda items 7D, 1 and 2 as presented.
Seconded, um, seconded by Julie. Okay, any discussion? Please call a vote.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
No. To the people in the audience, we have new people, we have people leaving, and we have people that just got tenure. So, in the spirit of sharing good things, congratulations.
Very good.
I don't want to take it off before we get a chance to say something.
Got it. Okay. Good, good. All right. Next up is urban communication network refresh.
I move to approve the configuration and installation of the Ruckus, Ruckus. Thank you. Network switches and access points from urban communications far an amount not to exceed $23,666 with an option of adding a block of time if needed at $130 per hour as presented.
Second.
Well, I think I'll go with Lisa. She was closest.
Any discussion? I'll just call a vote.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next up is approval of the food co-op.
I move to approve the Northern Illinois Independent Purchasing Cooperative Joint Agreement.
Second.
Lisa got it.
All right, well, Lisa. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I just want to say, real quick, that, just so everybody, the public knows what this is, this is a co-op that does our, basically our bargaining, for, for sake of summarizing, RFPs for the food that we purchase, for our, you know, to serve to our students. And the term is, that we're agreeing to now is for the next school year, 2024-25. And we, the board has been assured, basically, that what's at stake with this contract is essentially just the membership dues, right, Dr. Shaw? I mean, that's virtually all the cost, and, and we don't see that changing substantially with executing this contract. My only suggestion would be, and we've discussed this a couple of times before, is, you know, between now, so if we want to, at any point, stop using this as, the co-op as our source for the food that we, we serve, we would have to cancel February of the, of the year prior to the school year that, that is no longer. So, between now and February, could we evaluate maybe some other options, just from the vendor perspective, on, you know, who we're purchasing from, just to do a comparison? I don't think it's been done in a while.
I guess I need a little more direction on what you mean from comparing the, the vendor, because what the co-op does is they issue an RFP to all of the vendors, and then they bring in all of the vendors, evaluate and make a recommendation. Here's our lowest responsible bidder that, that we have vetted for you, the 74 member districts. So, they have actually went to all of those vendors and got the, the information, and we benefit from that. And that's, that's our membership dues. And the co-op gives us the ability to use your RFP results.
Right. So, I guess, maybe what I'm saying is, can we evaluate another option that might be available, or more than one other option that might be available, simply to do our, our food purchasing?
We're a relatively small district, and so we're not going to get economies of scale the way that 74 school districts would. This really, they, they do all of the labor for us, and it costs $600 to get the lowest price. Just the, what we would do for, what we would spend on our RFP and having attorney vet, that would be way more than that if we were to do it on our own. But I, we could talk more offline about that if you need to.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just for transparency, the questions that I had asked dealt with the restructuring of the co-op. It, you know, the co-op, this is the first time that I'm looking at the co-op. And seeing the memo, it was new bylaws, new structure of the co-op. So, I asked a lot of questions about those new bylaws and having it structured different. So, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I didn't question the, the financial piece of it, but it was just the, the questioning of if there was any impacts by the restructuring of the co-op, since it will now be a board of directors, that we won't be a part of, we won't be a director at, with a seat at the table. And I was assured that there is no impact. So, I appreciate your patience with me walking through that, Dr. Shaw.
Any other discussion? I don't think we called a vote yet, correct?
No, we didn't.
All right. Let's do the vote.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next up is the opponent of the Board Policy Committee Chairperson and Co-Chairperson. So, are there any nominations to, for the chairperson?
I'll nominate Julie for chair and you, Mr. President, for co-chair, if that's what you're looking.
I thi, I think we go one at a time. So, we'll, we'll go to the chairperson first, but I appreciate your effort of time.
It's almost kind of clocked. I'm just trying to be nice.
Yes. Is there any, well, I guess, any other nominations for chairperson or co-chairperson? I guess hearing none, then I guess we can do a consolidated vote. Let's call the vote.
Ready? Okay. Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Sure.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Sure.
Mrs. McMillan?
Thank you.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Items, yeah, items for the April 17th agenda. Dr. Shaw always has the time.
Two information items from this month as action items, and then next month, the information item. You'll see the, the first look at the amendment.
Okay. Okay, moving on then to, or anything else for the item nomination? Your laptop. Got it. Okay.
So, Eric, did the, so we tabled a discussion from today, but that will be on the agenda next month then, right?
Yes. Board of Education, Public Engagement, Outreach Opportunities and Possibilities will roll over.
So, Kelly, would you be opposed to having that sometime in the summer, so we can get possibly more community engagement or more interaction on that? The meetings, I want to make sure that that issue is discussed and we don't run into a situation where we're wanting to stop the conversation. Would you be opposed to just kind of tabling it to after school is out?
I think we can evaluate that maybe after, like, can we leave it on? Let's leave it on for next month, and then maybe if we want to table it again. I heard that's a fault every year at this point. I don't know what our, you know, what our agendas look like in the next few months.
Yeah. I would agree. I think it needs a, I think we need to follow on the, just because the board, the board voted and said they were table it, so to move it, I think, would require another vote. So, we'll do that. Can have that. Okay.
I also have the ELA program adoption.
Yes.
There you go.
Yes. Okay. Yeah. Next steps and follow-up related to discussion, interaction items?
I have, I have one quick thing. Earlier, we talked about removing something from the consent agenda. I know that's a Robert rule, where one board member can do that. But what is the appropriate time to do that? Because, is that?
I don't want to interrupt.
Do I do that at the meeting?
Well, that's what I was going to share with you. Like, we could go right here under consent agenda, and let's say there's two items. You can pull them apart, and that's totally cool. We just don't do it before the meeting, like, you and the latter, like, I don't like it, we're getting rid of it. But if you want to separate it out before we take the official vote, I think that's what you're really getting.
That's fine, as long as, yeah, that's fine. I'll wait till the meeting, if that ever comes up in the future.
That's been past practice.
Okay.
It just gets separated. I would for a separate vote. Okay. For the good of Mokena.
I got some. So, the Mokena Lions Club is having their annual Easter hunt at Main Park. Bag drop is at 12. If you're not in the park by 11:30, good luck, because it goes fast. By 12:02, it is done. I, I've, I've worked it for a number of years. I know the junior high is helping with eggs tomorrow, I believe, which is very nice. And it'll all be over before we blink, and the kids have a lot of good fun doing it, a lot of pictures. And one year, when I was helping to run it, I recorded the kids in slow motion, running out onto the eggs. It was like Braveheart, and it was funny. But it's a nice thing in our community, and the kids really like it. So, thank you. 12 o'clock this Saturday, Main Park.
I have one? All right, so I'll be honest, I have three. Scholarships are out, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, MEF, Mokena Educational Foundation, and Music Boosters have, have them out right now. So, students that are wanting to apply, I believe, Dr. Olinitis, you have them linked in your Friday?
My Friday.
Yes, fantastic. I know Ms. Francis already mentioned the color run, but registrations are special pricing through the end of the month, so jump in. It sounds like a ton of fun. And I also wanted to congratulate all of the students and the crew and the cast and Ms. Marshall for the musical, and the many volunteers, the parent volunteers. It was amazing, the support that everyone gave. And Ms. Briscoe with helping backstage, it really was a team effort, and well done. They should be really proud.
And that's, I was just going to kind of reiterate what you said too, about the musical, because these kids had six weeks to get it together. And of course, when we have months to get it ready, we're nervous that the kids aren't going to get it out, because they're so excited. And, and with the six weeks, we're nervous. And these kids, when it came to showtime, they were on. We had, of course, a couple of our kids who missed maybe a cue or two, because they were goofing around. But these kids, Mrs. Mae, Shelley Maeves and I just were, I mean, we did the costumes again, and, I don't know, it was just, it was a.
It was awesome.
It was awesome. And, and I think I'm going to miss being back there with those kids a whole lot. So, thank you to those awesome kids over at the junior high.
I have one, two, a couple of quick things. On that note, I was highly impressed with the talent of those kids. Oh, my gosh. They were so good. And thank you to Ms. Marshall and all the parents and everybody who spent so many hours working at, you know, doing the costumes and the sets. It was really good production. Thank you, Principal, for all the events you guys had. I know you've been a lot going on, as there always is, but, you know, I, I enjoyed the events I was able to attend. And the color run, okay, so, yes, this is my plug for the color run. Pricing goes up on April 1st. Right now, pricing is at the reasonable rate of $10 for students, including a t-shirt, event t-shirt, not just, you know, plain t-shirt, and $14 for adults or kids over, I think, 15 or something like that, including a t-shirt. Price goes up on April 1st, sensory-friendly option, Kids Dash, and my fellow board members. And any teachers or parents in the audience, we are currently recruiting people to actually throw the color on the kids as they go. So, if you want to participate in that fun thing, I know everybody would love to see our board members out there throwing color, or administrators, or whoever wants to. So, that's it. Thank you.
Okay.
One last time.
One last time.
One last time. I'd like to, to thank Mrs. Blank again, and all the teachers and staff that helped Mrs. Blank last night. It was a great benefit and fun. So, thank you.
I'm glad you all got here without ticket shopping after the game last night, you know. There were so many people having fun last night, and I'm glad it raised so much money for good cause. That's awesome. Man, you were really attacking that net last night. You were doing good.
I give 100% I believe.
I didn't expect anything less.
All right. If you have something to do with Mokena?
All right. Then I move as the Board of Education adjourned to closed session for purposes of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of employees and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, with no action after closed session.
Second.
All right.
Everybody. I gave it a Sam, so that's what we're sticking with.
Okay. Please call a vote.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes. United States for Governor.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunny?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. It is 10:06. Can we do 10 minutes, 15 minutes?